Good evening, welcome to this evening's Westerville Board of Education meeting. Glad you're here. This is a meeting where we will start with a couple of items of business and then we will move into the work session portion of our meeting which will be discussion amongst the board members and staff. You'll notice that the agenda is displayed on the screen in the front of the room and you can follow along there or you can also follow along on the district's website at W C S O H dot org. So you click on the district link and then you go to Board of Education and you can find the meetings on there if you'd like to do that. There will be an opportunity to address the board this evening and public comment as you'll see on there is item 3.01, Public Comments Relative to Agenda Items, and we'll discuss that when we get to that. However, do keep in mind that the first portion of public comment in the board meeting is about items that are on the agenda for action the night of the board meeting. So that would be Agenda Items 4.01 through 6.04. Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crowe. Mrs. Davidson.
Here.
Dr. French.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Here. Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand and join with us if you so please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And item three is that public comment section that I mentioned. However, this evening, we have no one signed up to speak for this portion of public comment, so we will move on in the agenda to item number four, which is the Personnel Consent Calendar. And this does require action. Could I have a motion on the consent calendar, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, John, would you like to talk about this?
I'm going to invite Mr. Kurt Chakowski forward to bring this resignation.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. President, Mr. Baker. Before you is one of the items that I reluctantly...
There you go. That I want to reluctantly bring to you. It is a resignation. It's the only item on the agenda for this evening. Mr. David Baker is our Executive Director, Elementary Academic Affairs, and he has an opportunity to expand his role and grow professionally, and we never want to hold anybody back. So I'll let Dr. Kellogg elaborate a little bit on Dave's time with us, but it's my recommendation that the board approve the consent agenda as presented to you this evening.
Thank you, Kurt.
So before the board acts on, and I just want to take a moment to recognize Mr. Baker. I got to start working with him during my transition last spring and then since I've been on board, he's been a valuable asset particularly to my transition in, very helpful in moving things along. We wish him well as he heads to Columbus and works for the children there, know he'll do wonderful work, and look forward to seeing the great work that transpires from his leadership. So thank you to Dave. I know all the principals are sad to see you go, many of us here as well. We appreciate your friendship as well as your work and we wish you best of luck as you move on.
We could just not call the roll. You know, use procedure and not let you go, but we won't do that. Anyone have any comments or questions before we call the roll? You mentioned that you and I seem to be ships passing in the night. You came as I was leaving before and now you're leaving as I come back. Someday we'll have to rectify that. Bart, would you call the roll?
Dr. French.
Well, best of luck to you, Dave. Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe. Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes. All joy to you and good luck. Obviously, the motion passed unanimously. We'll move on to standing business on the agenda, and this evening, 5.01 on the agenda is the Resolution Approving Summer 2014, and that is in fiscal year 15, Capital Improvements Construction Packages, and these are bid packages 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. And you are already at the microphone. Could I have a motion on this, please?
Cindy moved?
Cindy, yes, that's the one. Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. John, would you like me to just toss this to Jeff or do you want to say something first?
I think Jeff's got this one. Thanks, Jeff.
Alrighty. Members of the board, these projects are part of the fifth and final year of our current capital plan that the community approved in 2009. Bids were solicited in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and publicly read on January 28th. Bid Package 3 is for lighting retrofit work at eight schools. We received four bids. The lowest bid was submitted by Garber Electric in the amount of $335,700. Bid Package 4 is for locker replacement work at Blendon, Heritage, Walnut Springs North and South. We received three bids. The lowest responsible bid was submitted by Charter Hill Construction in the amount And I'd like to note that the average age of each of the lockers being replaced is 43 years, and this is 13 years beyond the expected useful life. And the average cost of replacement is $94.15 per locker. Bid Package 5 is for the replacement of four HVAC rooftop units at Blendon. We received four bids. The lowest responsible bid was submitted by Regal Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $394,537. Bid Package 6 is for adding an ADA restroom at Walnut Springs. We received five bids. The lowest responsible bid was submitted by Newbig Properties in the amount of $29,648. And Bid Package 7 is for renovating the orchestra room at South High School. We received four bids. The lowest bid submitted by 2K General in the amount of $93,000. So the total of the lowest bids is $1,916,711. This is 20 percent under the engineer's estimate, and it is being recommended that the board accept the lowest responsible bids for bid packages 3 through 7 as presented.
Comments or questions?
That's great. I'm glad to know how long those lockers last. At $93, another 40 years.
It's a pretty good return on investment, isn't it?
Yeah. That's interesting they lasted that long. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Will you just tell us a little bit about what's going to happen at South for the music area?
This is affecting the orchestra area. It's an area where there's three rooms currently that each one of them working independently isn't working for them, so they're recommending that we just create one larger space for the orchestra room. The largest room is actually 716 square feet, so we're going to increase that by 44 percent.
Other comments or questions?
Just a thought, would it be helpful for the board if Jeff took a moment and maybe Bart can help to fill in the capital improvement funding this as opposed to operating dollars? Might that be something the board's interested in?
I think that's a good idea, John.
Could we do that, Jeff? A little bit about the capital dollars that are being spent there as opposed to operating dollars, and I don't know, if I put you in a hotspot, I apologize, maybe Bart can help us both out as we move that forward.
You want this one or you want...
I'll take it. The permanent improvement levy collects about $11 million a year, just so you know. That money is divided up between capital expenditure, which is Mr. LaRose's area, curriculum, and technology. And so Mr. LaRose has his portion of the permanent improvement money that we get every year. He gets, he's allowed to spend so much of that, of his portion. And so he usually brings us, his busiest time is now because he's doing all of these projects, getting them ready because most, they can't do this stuff during the year. So he basically plans the money now. We have to approve the money in this fiscal year because when the contract is made, but we actually won't pay it until fiscal year 15 when the money comes in. So it's kind of a crossover fiscal year kind of thing. So he said, basically, this is a fiscal year 15 project, but it's going to have a fiscal year 14 contract. Okay, so it's a little different than buying other stuff. It's just...
So they're doing the work before they get paid. I mean, they're going to get paid after it's completed, basically.
Mr. Rose is doing the contracts now in fiscal year 14, but the actual money comes in for fiscal year 15. By the time they do the work, we'll receive money for it.
So you're encumbering those dollars basically for these projects next year?
Yeah, it's sort of a weird combination. Typically buy stuff normally during the school year, but in his case, he's buying it now and then he's going to do it over the summer for next school year. So it's a little different cycle. Does that help?
Anything else you want to address on that?
We will be presenting, I believe it's at the next board meeting, a more detailed presentation of what has occurred over the past five years with the capital plan, letting you know projects that have been completed, how we're doing dollar-wise. So that's actually in work and we'll be presenting it, I believe that's the next meeting.
Great.
Part of the important thing to know from Jeff's perspective is that, I look at his side of the operations, and when you think about what they're managing from a facility standpoint, and you consider the budget dollars that he has to work with to keep us, keep those things moving, it's really tremendous work. And I know he puts a lot of value to cost savings and efficiencies in stretching every dollar he can, like lockers going 43 years and costing $95 or whatever it was per kid. It's that kind of work that really helps the system. The dollars he's using keeps us away from operating dollars that help classrooms and teachers directly and just goes to capital. So I appreciate the work that his department does to keep this moving along the way it is because it's a thin dime for a lot of work and I don't know if people recognize the value of that, so I want to take a moment to recognize that as well.
I'm glad you did that. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Sure. Really, it was just a little bit of the same thing. I'm always impressed with what Mr. LaRose is able to do through his department, through his people, and not just you. I know a lot of people are supporting you and I appreciate you, Dr. Kellogg, talking about cost savings over time, because my assumption is, and I'm sure this is accurate, but when we retrofit lights, when we put in new X, Y, Z, it's not only code to make it more efficient, but I assume that that's like one of our highest priorities anyway. Lighting, electrical, HVAC, all of that.
Well, from a lighting standpoint, the work we're doing, we get a tremendous payback of two to three years on that. And then too, we've been applying for grant money. In fact, today for project work we did last summer, we received a check for just over $49,000 from the City of Westerville for their energy rebate program. Prior to that, through AEP, the prior year, we received about $25,000. So, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Always. Thanks, Jeff. You know, I've had a number of conversations over the years. I very much continue to appreciate all the work that you have done. I think you've probably been here long enough that a lot of people have forgotten that you came to us from private industry and you brought a slightly different approach into the district, and I'm very glad that you chose to stay in public education, and I am very glad that we continue to have the type of facility upkeep that we do.
Thank you.
Anything else? The roll, please.
Mrs. Crowe. Yes. Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Dr. French.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes. The bid packages have been approved. Moving on to item six, Robert's Rules of Order, and this is a resolution to suspend Robert's Rules of Order for this evening. And the reason we want to do that is so that we can have a freer, more open discussion amongst us for certain issues that really warrant that. With that, could I have a motion to suspend Robert's Rules of Order for items number 7.01 through 7.04? So moved. Thank you. Could I have a second?
Cindy? Mrs. Crowe, I'm sorry.
Yes. We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions regarding the suspension of Robert's rules for the rest of the evening? Hearing none, would you call the roll?
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Dr. French.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes. Robert's rules have been suspended for the duration of the meeting. Now we move into the work session portion of the agenda, and we have some very important components on there. I would not think, the first one's very important to us, but I think that the other pieces are very important to the members of the community. That said, we're going to start off talking about the way we do things, our board organization and how we want to go forward from this point on. And the board members, we have all had discussions over the last few months and are thinking about how we want to operate as a board and any changes we may want to make, where all of this will go as regards the operations of the board. And we're going to begin by talking about a piece that actually I think the board members, you'll recall that we saw this in December as we talked about the governance team goals for 2013 and 2014. And I will just run over those very quickly and then we can discuss whether we want to make changes to those or whether we believe that these are still appropriate. Item number one of our intention is that we will perform as a team, that we want to operate as an effective governance team, and we accomplish that by communicating openly with each other respectfully, developing trust, seeking sufficient consensus, but we do understand that we will not agree on every item, but we do understand and agree that the majority has the authority. We will each accept the majority opinion as the direction of the district following our debate. Item number two is engage the community. And with this, we say that we will try to engage the community often and by various means, and we want to know the opinions of the district's residents. We do accept the responsibility, though that is ours, as the elected representatives of the community. And we say that we will carefully listen to the community and the staff as regards the issues that come before us, and then we will vote based on what we believe is best. Number three is to provide transparency, and we are committed to providing transparent governance of our school district within the limits of the laws under which we govern. And we truly do hope to provide enough transparency to help create genuine trust from the vast majority of our community and staff. And as often as we can, we will explain why we make our decisions, what's behind those decisions, our dissents of our decisions, so that the community and the staff members really know what we're thinking. Item number four is to strengthen the building of community confidence, which I would hope would come from the pieces that you've already heard. But we are unanimously committed to govern the district in a manner that inspires the confidence of our community and staff. We will run our meetings, explain our decisions, set standards of excellence for our school system, and hold our staff accountable in a manner that causes the community and staff to continue to have confidence in us as a governance team. Item number five is to focus on students and connect with families. While there may be many different needs to focus on from time to time, the primary focus for the governance team will be the welfare and success of the students of the district. We are unanimous in identifying that as our primary focus, and we're always going to try to make our decisions with that in the forefront of our minds. We will measure the perceived success or failure of these governance team goals through subjective measure of the governance team members' opinions of success or failure once or twice a year, through the indications of regular discussions together annually, and through the input of opinions of community and staff members. Those are the governance team goals that we discussed in December. Perform as a team, engage the community, provide transparency, strengthen the building of community confidence, focus on students, and connect with families. Now that we've had a kind of a quick run-through of what those are, I want to know if anyone has any thoughts or suggestions, desires for change, additions, subtractions, songs of joy, whatever you might like to say about these.
I'll just give a song of joy. I'm glad, I'm glad that we have these five lofty goals and I just hope that we can live up to them. They are very good as far as our expectations of what we want to do for ourselves, the community, the students, the parents, and so I would expect them to hold us, you know, hold us to this. So remind us if we forget and if we go the wrong direction. But as Nancy said, we're not going to always be unanimous in everything we do, but we are here to serve mainly the students of this district, and so I'm really, really glad that we have these established and on paper. Thank you.
Other thoughts, comments? Anybody?
Go ahead. I was hoping you were going to sing. You said you were going to...
Oh, I mean, I was about ready to, but then I'd leave that to you.
Oh, alright, if you insist. Couple of quick questions that people may not know. Who else is on the governance team?
This represents the governance team in conjunction with the treasurer and the superintendent and the five board members.
Right, and I just, people may not know that it's not your executive team, it's the governance team. Okay, first thing, I just, maybe you all knew that.
It's our life raft together, the seven of us.
Okay, alright.
Think your swim.
And can we, you know, I assume it can be put on the website and all that kind of thing, but I'd, with all of our talk here about engage the community, provide transparency, man, I'd love to see this really put out into the community somehow so that they could not only hold us accountable, but maybe be a part of this process. Maybe we are saying we want to engage the community, maybe in a gentle way. I would suggest, I'd like to encourage the community to engage us. We're talking about providing transparency. I'd love to say to the community, be transparent with us, be open with us. I really, I echo Carol's words. There's really not a lot I would add to it. I think they're a great framework, and I think, Carol, we can do this. No, you said we hope. I think we can do this. I'm confident in that.
Great. I do, too. Anything you'd like to say?
I just, I'm going to pledge to you guys that I will hold up my end of the bargain and do that. So, and I agree with what Rick and Carol have said, and I look forward to working together with everyone. That's it.
If I might, my two cents would be that, you know, a big part of this is administratively, what's the information? How do we keep the board abreast of what's going on? And so on behalf of the administration, that's our effort to do that, to help with the transparency, help create the engagement pieces. I think part of what we're doing tonight represents that. I think the efforts to adopt these goals and then afterwards look at these board liaison positions which represent, in my view, a structural way of getting at the goals of transparency engagement, which are, I think, are important pieces, is, I agree with Mr. Velardo, that posting them and holding ourselves to them represents one action. The other action is actually putting some things in place that seem to mirror what we say we want to be. And so I appreciate the effort.
The other thing that I would add to everything that's already been said is that sometimes issues get heated, and I don't want any of us to assume that these goals say we will never feel passionately about what we believe in because we will. What they do say is that we will feel passionately while we respect other people who also feel passionately. So, yeah, I do see these as extremely important, not only for the board, I also see them, Rick, as you were suggesting, as an important thing for us to stand behind with the community. We all are very much aware of how things can go south in a hurry when issues get hot. And it's extremely important that we commit to holding a particular standard for ourselves and also encouraging others to stand with us. With that, is there anything else anybody wants to say about the goals before we talk about what John was mentioning, the liaison piece? Alrighty. Next thing that we were going to talk about this evening as regards the board organization pieces is a board liaison model. And the board has had liaisons in different fashion and different form for many, many, many years. And we have talked amongst ourselves before the board was created in January and so forth about what works with that liaison model, what doesn't work with the way it had been operating over the past few years. And the idea that we're looking at with liaisons is that the liaison positions help the board be more knowledgeable, feel more engaged, more informed with what's going on within the system. They help us relate better and more effectively with the community, and they also open up a lot more lines of communication between board members and the administrative team and even indeed with the community at large. What we want to do is use these positions more effectively than perhaps we may have seen in the past. We want to use them to create a more seamless hole, if you will, between the board and the administration and as we look across the decisions that come before the board, because the liaison positions are bridges. They are bridges between the board and the administration, they're bridges between the administration and the community, and the board helps make those bridges work, make them crossable. So the idea for liaison positions is not that they are quasi-administrative roles. They're not at all. It's not that all of a sudden you elected five board members who are almost unpaid administrators for the district. That's not it. The idea is it's an advisory kind of position, and we provide input, we provide insight, we provide a non-administrative viewpoint as regards what's going on in the district, sharing information that the administration might not have otherwise, learning from the administration in ways that we might not have known otherwise and that the community might be, might not be aware of. So the idea is it's, they're bridge positions, they're advisory positions, they are not administrator positions. So what's that actually mean? It means that when there are issues that come up that are related to the liaison positions that you see on the screen there before you, the liaison in that area, the board liaison, would be involved in decisions around that input insight, not telling the administration what to do, but helping to shape thinking and ideas and communication and identifying knowledge gaps as well. And then when that information comes to the board and it's time for that, it doesn't mean that liaisons absolve the treasurer and the superintendent of their responsibility to talk to the board members. So you don't get out of that, I'm sorry. In fact, that's part of opening up additional lines. So the liaisons tell board members what's happening, the superintendent and the treasurer continue to tell board members what's happening, board members are then better equipped to tell the community what's happening and to make better decisions based on that knowledge. So when things would come on the agenda that are related to board member liaison positions, typically what we will do is we'll turn to the liaison and ask if there is anything that needs to be said about that, that the board needs to be aware of. And the liaison would share information, if he or she has any, might not, might have. And then we would turn it over to the administrator for presentation. So that's kind of what we're looking at. With that in mind, we have identified six liaison positions at this time. And liaison positions will be appointed by the board president. It doesn't mean that this is the be-all and end-all of liaison positions forever and ever. There may be additional positions that we need. Some of those may be ad hoc, short-term, some of those may be longer-term. As we determine that those are needed, we can add those. With that, as you see what those positions are about, policy, it's reporting on policy from local, state, federal policymakers, and also identifying and working with policy development and approval within our district. Legislation reports on important changes in law and regulations that may impact our schools and also helps us to determine courses of action that we may wish to take. Finances, reporting on the financial health and well-being of the district, and also I would suggest considers ways to look at how we communicate that information. Operations and facilities, reports on issues and changes being implemented across the district, one of the important... what are the important projects, the projected needs and so forth. Community engagement and communication, that's reports on community engagement, communication activities across the whole district, also helps us identify areas for recognition that we need to be cognizant of. And then the final one, curriculum and academic achievement, this is reporting on curricular initiatives, student achievement outcomes, and recognitions for students. I have polled the board members about what kind of liaison positions they would be interested in, asked them to, you know, give us a couple of their top choices, and the good news is everybody gets their first choice. That's pretty darn cool. I'm a little surprised that happened, I was a little worried. Tracy will be the liaison for communication and engagement. Carol will be the finance liaison. Rick will be the curriculum and academic achievement liaison, and Rick will also be the legislative liaison. He has two. Cindy will be the operations and facilities liaison, and I will take on the policy liaison piece. So that's what we have for 2014. Comments, questions, thoughts about liaisons? Dandy.
So we'll put this in place for our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, and so at our end administratively, as we do our Friday updates, we'll provide information relative to those particular areas for your consideration as part of that communication model. So as we see things coming through that we think would be relevant to your positions, we'll put it under that heading.
And we are mapping this out as we go. So you are seeing some changes taking place, some shifting, if you will, in the way things are going. So we will be making some adjustments and figuring out how these play as we move ahead. The last thing under the organization component are potential revisions to the meeting agendas and procedures. And this is because we all agreed that there are tweakings that we want to do to the agenda, and we thought the best place to talk about that was right here. So I'm not going to go into a big, long set of comments about what the agendas look like, you all know what they look like, and I'm not going to talk about what I want to take in or take out. I want to hear from you. What do you, what is your thinking about the meeting agendas and our procedures for our meetings? Do you have any thoughts about things you would either like to subtract or add?
I do.
You do?
Yes, I think that the updates of what's going on needs to come out.
The announcements?
The announcements. Well, I mean, I think we can do it differently. We can still tell what's going on, but it doesn't have to be so formal. And I can jazz that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. How do you feel?
I absolutely agree. Oh, I'm so sad, I did it for two years. I'm hurt.
It's like a hazing process for you, wasn't it?
They asked me to do it the third year and I refused, and I, and Dr. Kellogg said, "Are you rebelling?" I said, "Yeah." Now, I agree. I think that was a waste of time. I think that those kinds of things can either be read online, first of all, you can go to the website and see a number of the things that we used to repeat here, or we can also give comments at the end of the meeting if we think we need to emphasize certain items. So that one could be easily eliminated.
Oh, yeah.
What else do we think about twice for public comments? Do we want to do that just once? Just throwing it out there.
What was that?
Public comments.
Do you like twice?
Do we want to do it two times, or do we just want to do it once?
Well, it depends on how it's set up, because I feel that they need to get the opportunity to speak to each item, and that was the issue. We held them to, we held the public to speaking to, you know, just so many items at the first and then so many items at the end. So it depends on how we work that. We need to keep it open enough so that everybody has the opportunity to speak.
Oh, yeah, and I want to hear from everyone.
It could be done once, but it, but it needs to be open to all items, maybe. I don't know. That could be a way to do it.
I don't know that I would be in favor of cutting it down to one. I like how it's broken out, that the first time, address anything on the agenda, and then the second time, it's a free-for-all. Meaning, in a good way, tell us what you want to tell us. And, you know, kind of Nancy talking before, that sometimes that can be a little dicey and a little heated, and, but we have the parameters, you know, you're not, you're not talking to people and you're supposed to talk to an item or an agenda or some item that you want to talk about and not really people. I don't know. I'd be hesitant to cut down any tool that we use to hear from folks.
Cindy thinks one would be helpful. I'm kind of torn on this one.
Yeah.
With two, it gives, if you have something, it zeroes in on things that are on the agenda if we have that first section. She wants two, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, Cindy wants two. If we zero in, let people zero in on the agenda items, it actually helps us focus in on things that people have concerns about or support for, things that are being voted on that night. So I like that. And then the other one, you know, as I always call it, for the good of the order, sometimes those can be really long, and there were times in years past that we didn't go home till midnight, but you know what? I know that it's difficult for people who have to be at work early the very next morning, but I think it's much more difficult if we don't hear what needs to be said. I would rather hear the dicey stuff than not hear it.
Well, you'd rather hear it, sorry, you'd rather hear it out loud than to read it on Facebook later.
Or read it on Facebook anyway, but yeah.
Or, yeah, you know, I just, I would just rather hear from you all. And again, at the end, it's, it's just kind of an open-ended discussion, monologue, and then we can respond as appropriately. That's, yeah, I just would hesitate to cut down any opportunity they have.
How do you feel about the five-minute limit, or the five-minute length?
I'm okay with that. I think sometimes you need five minutes to get it out, and I wasn't saying that we should cut it down to one. I just, this was something we learned in board training, and they talked about having one versus two, and just wanted to hear your thoughts.
I'm okay with the five-minute.
Five, dot of a fear.
Do you think it should be more?
I'm in favor of five, and I know that there are administrators that would like to chop my head off for saying that.
Well, yeah, there are districts that do it for three minutes, of course.
Well, you know, and I think the five thing, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, the five-minute thing is, if nothing else, maybe it's a, maybe it's a, an opening to people that struggle speaking in public, that to get it out in five minutes is hard enough as it is. So to really whack it and to say, it's got to be two, three, four, whatever, I don't know. It seems sometimes, I've listened for a long time, you all have spoken, and it hasn't felt like five was a really long time to me.
And an awful lot of people don't go anywhere near that five-minute limit. I prefer to keep it at five. It sounds like everybody else does.
Oh, you're just talking about everything on the agenda right now?
You can talk about everything on the agenda, yeah.
Awesome. One thing, I like this room. There are great advantages to it. I just want to make sure, and I'll attach this to the agenda discussion somehow.
I was wondering how you were going to get there.
That we, yeah, this will be a little tricky, that we just accommodate people as best we can here so that they can come up and participate in the agenda.
Participate in the, and sign up for public comment.
Man, that was hard. But the main thing, yeah, I would like to see us highlight a school, a student, an activity, a group or something at the beginning of the meeting, you know, 10 minutes. These elementary kids come out and they sing a song. These high schoolers come out for 10 minutes and they talk about a science project they got going on. Not just the recognition thing, which we need to do, but to highlight just every meeting, a school, an activity, a something or other.
I agree, we do that in parent council, and it's huge, because then everyone in the district knows what's going on. And you see everyone's little shiny, bright star out there. But I think it should be the kids and not put on the teachers and the staff.
I agree with the idea of more student-based presentation. Where I want to be careful is to artificially, this is going to sound horrible, but artificially filling time in the meeting for the sake of saying, "If this sounds poorly, I apologize, entertaining the board and the superintendent and the treasurer. Families are busy, young kids are busy." And so doing it for, I think if it's a meaningful experience for them in terms of recognition, it adds value if it's the other direction. The other thing I would encourage us to do as we think about meeting places is periodically throughout the year, pick meetings where we intentionally visit and have the meeting at a school for purposes of showcasing something at that school. So for example, a unique technology program, a unique curriculum, a unique piece that they're doing, let's go to their turf, let them show off in their living room what they're doing so well, and we move ourselves. So it was never our intent to make this the only place we ever meet. I would like to kind of put those two together. So as we look at the board liaison and that piece with student recognition, I think that's a great place to start thinking about what that might look like for us and to the system and moving that forward, but that's something I would envision. I like that idea.
Yeah, and I love that second piece, and I fully concur with the first, that we don't want to just fill time. We want to make it useful for them as well, meaningful for them as well.
I'd love to get out to their buildings at times and let them showcase what they're doing.
Yep, good.
And I think that it's also a really good learning tool for the board, is when we are seeing what they're doing, what the programs are, what the curriculum looks like in action, all of those components teach us and help us become better decision-makers. So even beyond the importance of showcasing, it's also important for how we approach our decisions, because we then understand more fully what's really going on with our kids.
Yeah, and I thank you for kind of terming it that way. I've talked to several people in the community, some very positive, some negative, and kind of like my last line to them has always been, "Are you in one of the schools? Are you volunteering in a school? Are you just walking through it?" You know, the old thing of Emerson, the newer one of Central, the, whatever, doesn't really matter. But it, you know, this would help me to kind of practice what I preach, if I'm going to challenge them to be in the schools, and I mean, I'm in there, but I just, I just think it would be a great way to showcase what's happening with some of these schools and the kids and things that they're doing.
I think so, and maybe, John, as we think about what the agenda is going to look like and how we approach that, we will mess with the idea and see how we can make it work, and also how we balance presentations with recognitions and so forth and so on as we move forward. Other things that you want to add to, subtract from the agenda, or that you want to pretend have something to do with the agenda? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, Rick, really.
I want to talk about the Olympics.
They have an agenda for the Olympics.
They have an agenda for the Olympics.
Anything else that you want to add or change, or anything that ticks you off about the agenda?
Were you going to talk about minutes?
Minutes, yes, yes. Bart, why don't you talk about what you would suggest for the minutes? I want you to be part of this, you're sitting over there awfully quietly. We'll make you sing if you don't stop that.
Okay. Minutes, typically, according to Robert's Rules of Orders, does not require a roll-call vote, and so sometimes people have apprehension about voting on minutes if they weren't in attendance. And by Robert's Rules, you can certainly vote on any minutes, even if you weren't at the meeting, it's just you're basically testing that it's a true copy. You can make emotions, but one thing that would help speed things up is it doesn't require a motion, a second, and a roll-call. You would still ask if there's any additions and deletions, corrections, we still do those, but when you don't have any more, basically you would just say minutes are approved as recorded, and we just move on. So it's just one less thing we have to take a roll-call for.
How do you guys feel about that? Would you be okay without having a roll-call on the minutes?
Sure.
Cindy says yes.
Okay.
I mean, you're still going to review them, it's just there won't be a second.
Yeah, right. And there is no, there is no need, there is nothing gained by calling the roll that I can see on the minutes. Because we do still have the ability, if we want to disagree with something or correct or whatever, we can still do that.
I have one more thing. What about when the agenda is posted? Do we want to talk about that a little? Because we've all kind of talked about that.
Why don't you elaborate?
We're talking about being transparent and more community engagement. Is there a way we can get it out a little sooner? And I know that would be hard for all of you and you. I know, I just, I mean, we can't say no, we've got to try to find a way, that's my thought. I think it's something we should entertain.
Yeah, that's always been an issue, I think, and I know that, and, you know, our request previously was that we should have it a week in advance, but I know that corrections may have to be made during that week, of course, but if it's all possible, you know, studying it over the weekend, which is what we always have to do, and get the information pretty much, and if we have any questions, it's Monday morning, you know? And so there is an issue with when we get it, when the public gets it, and if, I don't know if that can be moved up at all, but that would be great.
I mean, we can make every effort to make it sooner. What you're, the, the more lead time between the meeting and you're getting it, the more likely between when you get in the meeting, there's going to be changes that require additional review. So right now, our effort is by Friday, I think, noon. Am I correct, Jill? Is when we try and have everything done and cleaned up. If you want to move that back, we will work our hardest to do that, but that will probably mean changes that happen in between. My concern there becomes the litany of communication back and forth, so the agenda's posted, and we're talking about the public preview, not the board preview at this point. Am I correct?
Well, the boards, the board does, the boards, actually.
You're talking about the board?
I'm speaking about the board, too. The public, too, but we don't get a lot of lead time, let's face it.
Once you go public, then changes are much more difficult to make. And so for the effort, I struggle with the transparency and communication piece, because public perception of changes to something that's gone out oftentimes lead to questions about validity, credibility, et cetera. And so you kind of get in at crosshairs of trying to be quick to your transparency versus being accurate in your transparency, I guess. So there's that end, that date. And then to the board, my question would be, the sooner we try and get it to you, the time in between, there's going to be changes, and then it's the communication back and forth, oh, we had to change this, we had to add this. So I, you know, it's a, we'll do our best to meet whatever deadlines you want. That's just, I think, the sidebar to it. It's never been, at least in my intent and timing, to make that an issue for protecting issues, keeping people from having the information. It's been more about making sure that what we're putting out there is as accurate as we can be. And in the busyness of the day, sometimes it just takes that long, so.
What if, what if we kind of do Solomon's baby on that, so to speak? I would, I also think that we should err on the side of accuracy when we go public with the agenda, because we create a lot of distress for other people if we are inaccurate with what we do. But we could let the board know what the draft looks like, even without the accompanying documentation, which might not be ready, but at least if the board is aware of what's going to be on the agenda, so that, you know, some of it we already know. We know that old business is going to reappear. But, you know, what kind of stuff is coming? If documents are ready, they could go along. If not, you know, materials to come, and with a big draft across the front of it, how would that be?
I think that's acceptable. I would say there, the other means, two means by which I'm trying to provide, my team and I are trying to provide up-to-date information for you all to kind of keep ahead above the trees, is through the Friday update, and using that as a form for saying, this is what we're working on and we anticipate seeing come forward. And session- In sessions like this, where we have a work session where we're not actually acting on anything, but we have a discussion which gives administration some guidance about next steps. So we can bring it back and so when you get to a point where we have to act on something, we've been having discussion all along. So those are two things that administratively we're trying to do to kind of do that. Now, it doesn't necessarily align to saying, this date on this agenda day, this date on the agenda is when you'll see it. But if we want to do a more, more upfront days prior to Friday, if you wanted to move that back a couple of days, we'll work it as best we can, we can see how it goes. But those will be the two other places where you should anticipate seeing information that help keep you moving along.
Friday update is a big help, that is a great addition. But I still would like to see it if possible, a rough draft or something by Wednesday, whatever, if possible. I don't know if that's too soon, but the board could, you know, I mean, because like I'm saying, we have a day or so. I don't know.
We can give it a whirl, you want to shoot for Wednesday noon?
We could try it and if it doesn't work, you know, go back and.
Go back to quitting? I mean, yeah, I think that that's the case. I think the place you're going to see the most disruption between Wednesday, not disruption, most changes, it's going to be around personnel items, particularly when you get to that time of year.
But that changes anyway, sometimes even on Fridays.
So what we could do is Wednesday noon and then let you know that when we go live to the public, that might be the point in saying, this is now live to the public and you maybe need to be informed of changes that happened from the draft that came to the board to what went live. So example, if on the draft on Wednesday, it didn't have three resignations that happened on Thursday when we went live to the public, we'd let you know, you might, that there's some changes in there. So what that'll mean back on our team and we'll take it on is we're going to have to be purposeful about knowing what's changed from Wednesday till we go live to the public. And do we leave you to figure that out or do we give you a detailed list of these have changed that have happened since you got the draft?
Maybe we could be responsible for checking it again on Friday or whatever, you know? I mean, maybe that's our responsibility.
That's kind of the, that's the sensitivity to workload I'm trying to get at.
And I'm thinking, you know, maybe what we do is we try out a basic draft on Wednesday, see how that goes. If we end up that we are utterly confused or that we're unable to figure out what the heck has been changed and what has not, then we'll have to rethink. But we do have to be sensitive to the administrative workload and the demands that we choose to place on the administration. And yet I know that there are concerns with, you know, just the weekend prep, so we can try it.
So the Friday, I'm sorry, the Friday update might be the place where someone indicates a change in what they have from the draft agenda, so you will see it in the Friday update.
Okay, for board docs. For the purposes of recording, what Jill is saying is that in our electronic board doc system, there is an ability for us to be emailed when there's a change to the agenda. Let's mess with it and see what we can do that doesn't significantly increase administrative workload and still responds to.
Okay, I want to tell you Cindy's idea.
Okay, what's Cindy's idea?
So she is suggesting Wednesdays with bullet points, just topics, not so much detail. Hey, this is just boom, boom, boom.
Yeah.
You know.
So within that, let's think about the portions of the agenda. Do you want, the biggest piece is personnel stuff, when that's big. Do you want that as part of Wednesdays with the detail? Or do you want to just wait until you get it on Fri, when it goes live to the public? And the other kinds of things that you might need to research, or do you want, let's try the whole thing. Let me back up, let's just try the whole thing, Wednesday at noon. Punch it through as a draft as Cindy's suggested and let's see what happens.
Let's see what happens, we can always say, never mind.
Can always back up.
The reason I think this is a good idea, and I appreciate Jill not quitting, is I know, I concur with Nancy that we want to err on the side of accuracy. For me, I want to be accurately prepared for the meeting. And this roadmap that we're going to go into, I drilled down just deeply into the woods because it's that important. And so when I get Wednesday's bullet points, if there's something that I need to drill out down into, it just gives me a little bit of extra time to do that.
And we'll continue to use the model we did for this one where when we know we have a big thing coming, let's give you lead time. So, yeah, I think around that notion of working as a team, transparency, and keeping the board well informed so they're making good decisions, we want to continue that. So this would be one more effort to do that, and we can do that, let's give it a whirl.
Okay, we have a few things that we've talked about changing. We need to move on to the teaching and learning roadmap unless anybody's got something major. The last thing that I would ask is I want us to get rid of some of the plethora of numbers in the agenda. I think the agenda is overly formalized and painfully so. So I would like to see us, for instance, we don't need to call, give a different number to every meeting that we're going to be having in the future and so forth. So I would like us to look at that, just streamline with that.
Well, tell me, I'm not following you.
So for instance, when you go down here and we say, future meetings under number nine. Nine point zero one. Nine point zero two. Nine point zero three. Why don't we just list the lasted meetings and be done with it?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I just would like to streamline it a little bit, make it a little more comfortable.
Whatever, it's easy, yeah.
Yeah.
Save some ink.
Sounds good. Just dates and things, okay. That's right, where possible, it's not always possible, sometimes it is. Okay, let's move on. The teaching and learning roadmap. John?
My pleasure to invite Jen Knapp from the curriculum department forward to present this. As the board knows, we engaged in a deep process of looking at teaching and learning roadmap. This has huge implications for mostly technology in the district. And I know you got a copy of the roadmap, I'll let folks know that's initial draft. My mom's a former English professor, so those of you who had trouble with grammar and spelling and punctuation, I get it. She graded my first letter home from college, true story, put a D minus on it too. So I encourage you to overlook some of that. Jen Knapp's going to drill down in the details of the roadmap and then we'll talk a little bit about where we're going. So, and then we'll open up for some conversation and questions, so I'm going to turn it over to Jen Knapp.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. Our process began back in October and focused around four questions. I'm trying to get.
Turn it on the side.
Thank you, technology at its best, thank you, Dr. Kellogg. It focused around four questions. Where are we now? Where do we want to go? How are we going to get there? And how will we measure success? When we last shared the roadmap, we had been through Planning Lab 2. Since then, our final planning lab was January 22nd. Our community identified several themes that focus on 21st century learning. Through the strategic planning process, the first two focus on teaching practices. The last three focus on access to technology as an essential teaching and learning tool. In December, this mission statement was shared, which is truly reflected in the LEARN rubric. Teachers should consider if their lessons are learner-centered, that students are engaged, and the resources are aligned to their curriculum and the needs of the individual learner. Do the students find the lessons meaningful and engaging and challenging? And is the environment safe, nurturing, and caring? At the center of this work is what and how do students learn? This process considered all of the components around it in light of the LEARN rubric to enhance teacher-based instruction. This slide shows a list of factors identified by the Planning Lab participants that would require action to assure successful implementation of this roadmap. They were then ranked based on how necessary they were for implementation. So it's not to say the ones on the low level aren't necessary, but it's to say the ones on the left that are in the darkest blue have to happen. We can't have, you know, we can't worry about furniture if we don't have equity of access. We can't focus on the software and hardware adoption if we don't share the work that we want to do. Also, it doesn't necessarily reflect that everything on the left needs to happen first. A lot of this work, which you saw, the whole entire document, a lot of these timelines start tomorrow or tonight through, in March and throughout the next five years. These are strategies from each level and, you know, the blue aligns with the page before. The strategic plan stated access to technology as a key theme. Our goal is a two-to-one student ratio, student-to-device ratio by the end of the 2016-17 school year. This would start with having 90 power users by the end of the 2014-15 year, which is to say, we're not going to start with 90 on August 13th. Maybe we start with 15, maybe we start with 20 power users that have been identified through a process to say, okay, let's start this out, let's see how it goes, let's find the mistakes, let's find how this is working. Let's provide some rubrics so you can measure whether or not this is the best tool for you to use at the high school, at the middle school, with our youngest of learners. And then let's roll out in phases. The second year, and that would also include 1,000 student devices. The second and third years would be 405 teacher devices each year with 3,000 student devices at the end, bringing us to a total of 7,000 for our roughly 14,000 students. Another strategy is the power user demonstrations. So there's power users identified at the beginning, helping them to pilot different technology and then keeping that group as power users. Or, you know, that group can change over time, but those power users, it's not what we implement in the summer of 2014 is the best thing going in the summer of 2016. So we need to constantly be looking for ways in which to enrich our curricular opportunities for our students. The next one is a software and hardware adoption process. So we really need to assess our current inventory, this is something that happens very soon, and create applications for purchase. Right now, and I know, we have PTAs and PTOs that deal with this. Teachers asking for technology, our teachers implementing stuff, purchasing things that may or may not be supported from our IT department. So really streamlining that, evaluating what we have, and then moving forward cohesively. This next picture is an example of what a classroom would look like. At the top, you see that two-to-one ratio, whether that be a tablet or a laptop, but it's a wireless device for our students. The second is down in the corner, it has the kind of dotted lines around it. That would be the main presentation station. So the little purple dot says, okay, that station can tie to a student device, it could tie to a teacher device. So then that is up on the screen for all to see. You know, if I said, oh, hey, Johnny, your problem looks great, you've done a really nice job. You know, I could pop it up on the screen, have him explain how it would go, it would allow for that interactivity. There's an LED projector and then the special surface on the wall to enable that interactivity. Funding and sustainability, very big question. This plan will require some reallocating of funds, both from our capital budget and our operating funds, using the IT refresh money and also utilizing the additional $1 million from the board that began in 2014, this current fiscal year through fiscal year 2018. Our next steps, Dr. Kellogg will be holding staff chats in February, I believe his first ones are tomorrow. And then the district technology steering committee will be developed to further refine and operationalize the strategies and action steps. This committee is composed of representatives from departments across the district. This is an example of some of our action steps for the high-impact factors over the next several months, starting with the staff chats. And then we will be researching and evaluating to make determinations for our IT department and for professional development. This summer, you'll see additional action steps, which include selecting devices, creating policies, and starting that professional development. Lastly, how will we measure success? And I actually go from the bottom up because you see our students are at the very top, which is the most important part. One way we'll measure success, more than 50% of our teachers will be using electronic formative assessments. Most teachers will have access to job-embedded professional development and will get a quick response from the help desk. They will also be at an intermediate level of tech literacy. Most importantly, most of our students will be able to achieve technology literacy. And nearly all of our students will have a 21st century learning experience to prepare them for post-secondary success. So those are some of the ways in which the Planning Lab identified that this roadmap would be successful. And I wanted to keep that brief because I know the questions would be long. So, questions?
Jen's done a nice job of pulling out some of the important pieces to that largest document. And so I appreciate her efforts and the efforts of the team to bring this forward. It was a lot of work. And more importantly, what stretches in front of us is tremendous amount of work when you see what's on there. I mean, the plan calls for 7,000 devices rolled out within two and a half school years. What I'd like you to go back to in the visual first is the seven silos, which began with the question, what and how do students learn? It didn't begin with technology, it began with what and how do students learn around 21st century skills. What we recognize is that technology is a tool to enhance instruction for teachers and for students and bring better results. So we began from that premise and worked backwards to what you saw in classrooms. But the, all the other surrounding pieces on the seven silos become extremely, extremely important. And so I like to define this as a district technology solution across the system that aligns everybody thinking about what kids need to do and learn. And so the professional development that needs to happen to support this, facilities. If you've noticed, the desk outside of Stephanie's office that she won at the E-Tech conference, which represents the kind of furniture that supports this kind of business. I don't know that we're ready to buy 14,000 new desks, but it sure is a nice-looking piece of furniture. So the professional development of policies, I'll give you examples, some policies. You've seen a lot of districts go to one-to-one solutions. That's just a policy change, that's not an instructional change. You've seen districts go to bring your own device policies, allow kids to bring stuff in. That's not an instructional change, it's a policy change. What we're into is what's an instructional change? What is student-centered learning? How does it enhance teaching? And we view technology as a way to do that, so that's what this plan really gets at. So I knew you've had a chance to read it, so if you have questions, we'll take them at this time.
Who wants to ask?
You know, as I read through it, I kept thinking, are we going to allow for students to bring in their own technology? Okay.
There's a strategy in there around developing a bring-your-own-device policy. There's a timeline for it and what would that mean? The IT guys have considered, what does that mean to our network and network security? So yeah, we think that's, you know, this plan calls for the purchase by the district of 7,000 devices. That gets you two students to one device. If you had a bring-your-own-device policy, I think we accelerate our, closer to a one-to-one ratio within that same timeframe, which is really where we'd like to be. It's funny, we say one-to-one, college campuses talk about three devices to one student. Those kids will walk around college campuses or in workplace environments, two and three-to-one to the user. We already have kids walking in the door, we have the data on our kids walking in the door with devices that log on, you know, connect to our network. So we already know what that pipeline looks like. So it's a way to get to one-to-one quicker. But the other side of that is teachers having the toolsets to feel confident that instructional design calls for appropriate use of technology in the classroom so it can be the number-two pencil. We all experience, you don't have your pencil, can't do the work.
Right.
Other questions or comments or thoughts?
Jen, how many teachers were involved in this?
We had roughly almost 40 participants, the majority of those were teachers. We had union representation as well, I think maybe 25, I would have to go back and check the numbers. And they were really picked from a broad spectrum. It wasn't just people who were really tech-savvy, but some people who were tech-savvy, yet some people who didn't necessarily incorporate technology into their daily instruction so that we could have a wide range of voices at the table.
One of the strategies you notice in there talks about a district technology team. One of the strategies you notice in there talks about a district technology team, and also talks about building teams. We envision that as a way to continue teacher engagement with the ongoing process. I'm not going to sit down in Greg Lewis or other people in our district office, I'm going to sit down and determine what devices students should have and teachers should have. We may decide, design some parameters, but we want them, as part of the power user group, to help us define what kinds of devices, to help us determine what 21st-century teaching and learning looks like, to develop those rubrics, to inform us about what works in the classroom. This plan just sets the stage for that and provides continuing opportunities for ongoing dialogue with our teaching staff, and I would stretch that to students, when you think about some of these policies, and to families, when you go to equity of access, right? So we want to continue those conversations, so the plan doesn't say, okay, now just go forward and do, and the plan says, now go forward, engage other people around these strategies, get them involved to move forward. So strategy, interestingly enough, the first high-level strategy is sharing of the roadmap. Well, and the teams that identified this also identified the person most responsible for that, guess who got sharing of the roadmap? Guess what we're doing right now? The superintendent is informing the board about the roadmap with his staff, that's the first strategy. And tomorrow morning at 8:00, I'm at Hanby Elementary School to talk about the teaching and learning roadmap, to start bringing awareness from our teaching staff and our principals about what's in there and what their role can be moving forward. So this is not a drop-down from above, this is a design.
Cindy wants to know, were the teachers surveyed, and if so, how many?
Were the teachers in the Planning Lab surveyed?
In general?
Within the district? Not at this time, we haven't surveyed them, we've had surveys just as far as what professional development needs they have, and embedding technology and instructional practices always rise to the top of that. I think at this point, or, you know, moving forward, broadening the conversation, as John has planned, with the sharing of the roadmap, would definitely lend itself to that.
The two places, one of the places we got feedback on technology would be through this, and Jen did it in one of her first slides where she talked about strategic planning process, if you go back to that, the abundance of input around 21st-century teaching and learning and the use of technology in classrooms. So that was a huge driver from the community, which included our teachers. I can tell you anecdotally, I can't sit in a teacher meeting and talk about instruction, not have them tell us about the needs for more technology, their thirst is high, we read applications for the WF grant funds today, and I would bet over half of them called for additional technology they wanted. I think the, where the friction point becomes is trying to support teachers in the classroom around district-level solutions, and lack of parameters there lead to problems. Example, I'm going to be device-specific for a minute, if this rubs someone wrong, I apologize, it's just a perspective, not a mandate. That said, iPads tend not to be good enterprise solutions. Why? They're very expensive, the apps piece of that was never intended for school use, it was an individual-user design. Apple has since backed up and tried to find ways to make it more school-friendly, but that wasn't their intent. So they don't tend to be good enterprise solutions like we're talking about. If you have an iPad, you know you have to log on to your account. So you can't put 10 iPads in a classroom with 25 kids and say, go grab your device and come forward and do this, easily. Distribution, so we need solutions that solve classroom instructional needs, but can be supported at district level long-term, from a financial perspective, from infrastructure perspective, from policy perspective. And so that's where I think there's a thirst around having it, but there's not a district plan to implementing it. And I kind of look at it this way, I'll go back to the picture of the classroom that was up there, has an interactive whiteboard, devices for students, devices for kids, an ability to toggle back and forth between the device and the board, and bring student work up, et cetera, and for students to share their work. Right now, when you open a typical classroom, what do you expect to see? Chalkboard, desks, books, pencil sharpeners. Why shouldn't our expectation be that when we open up a classroom, what we see is an interactive whiteboard, student electronic devices they can get on, and a teacher device that they can use to enhance instruction? Why shouldn't that be the expectation when you unlock the door? And within that device, digital content that's provided at the district, no different than we distribute textbooks today, why are we, why aren't we embedding that in our curriculum adoption process, when we do materials adoption, as a policy perspective, as a funding perspective? So when a teacher has that classroom, they also have access to content that we've provided to them to help them deliver the curriculum. If they don't want to add to that digital content, that's fine, no different from a teacher today bringing in an article from outside the classroom to supplement the materials we have. If they build stuff they want to share, we should have that capacity to do that in our infrastructure, through a learning management system like Schoology or Google for Education. So these are some of the tools that all come part of this big picture, that roll out, that start to make this the way we do business and not an add-on to what we do.
So you envisioning pretty much laptop devices, pretty much, I mean, they've got to be pretty powerful.
The budget, the budget is built around student devices that run at about $350 a pop. And there are a number of different devices out there that you, that, I won't name specific devices, but there's a number of different kinds of devices out there that fit their need. The question is, what's the instructional practice we're trying to get at that drive what the device should be? Not what do we see out there that looks kind of cool, but what, what really will get at the bread and butter of what we want kids doing in a digital learning environment as part of that, what that teacher has designed for them? The device isn't the teacher, the device is the tool for the teacher.
I think that's a really important point, the device is not the teacher, it is a tool for the teacher. And, you know, how rumors run rampant when there's going to be something big like this introduced, and, you know, some people were saying to me, well, this is, this is a ploy to replace teachers. No, no, it is not at all. You know, the idea is, we're trying to provide, as I understand it, and tell me if I've got it wrong, that we are trying to provide a set of tools, a set of tools for teachers to use as is appropriate, and for students to use as is appropriate for curricular delivery and for learning. So it's, it's broadening our capacity to deliver curriculum, and it's also letting us provide ways to deliver curriculum more closely aligned to what our children will be doing in life. So, you know, the way that we are teaching now, which, you know, I walk in a classroom, it's the same classroom we walked in when we were little children, and yet, when I walk into my workplace or in other venues, so to speak, where I must produce, that would be totally foreign. So it's a set of tools, it's not a replacement.
No, if you look through that plan, you won't see anything in there that talks about purchasing courses and distributing those. Now, that said, it doesn't mean that technology doesn't present a tool that offers greater opportunities for kids for other kind of educational experiences that are outside the normal, the normal means of resources that we have available to us, but I think that's a fair, a fair friction point around when do we make those decisions? So not advocating for replacement of classroom teachers with electronic content and devices, what I'm advocating for is giving teachers tools so that they can meet the standards of the new assessments that our kids are going to need to do. So go back to your memory about the assessments we've talked about, the online assessments, and those experiences kids are going to have in high-stakes tests. And what I said back in December was, I didn't want to purchase technology to solve the assessment problem coming, I want us to purchase technology to support the teacher in the classroom around the teaching and learning model we want to have. And secondary to that, provide us the infrastructure to be ready for online assessments as they come to us and give our kids experiences they need to be ready for those assessments, because they've seen it day in and day out, not just on the day of the assessment. So that's kind of the alignment on that. So our teachers are, they're bright, hard-working people, if we give them the tools and give them the support, they'll get it done, and they'll get it done well, and that's really what the model's about. But I sometimes, you ever try and put a group of adults in a car and say, let's go to dinner? Everybody agrees to go to dinner? The argument's about where we're going. You know, so everybody has different needs, different wants, different likes, so when it comes to technology, which has become a world that's anything from a little smartphone like that to a gigantic computer and everything in between, we all have our preferences about what we like to work from. I remember the days of IBM PC versus Apple in schools, and that, that divide. Now, the argument is much broader than that, and so people have certain comfort zones with certain kinds of devices they want to, I want a tablet, I want an iPad, I want a Google device, I want a, we still need a district solution. And it's got to be robust enough that there's some variance for people, but there can't be so much variance that we can't support it. And I would say our current system is putting us in a position down the line where people are going to be frustrated, because we're not going to be able to support, everything comes down the line. Or your IT department is going to grow leaps and bounds in order to support everything, and I don't know that's the best way to go. So I think we can meet the middle.
And I love the fact that we are starting with how kids, can you go back to the silos If you get, notice again, and you did a great job of trying to summarize this.
102-page document.
Yeah. I have so many notes in here that it would take all night, and I used every highlighting color, it's really pretty. But I, I love the fact that, one, the center silo, how do kids learn? Two, all seven silos have to go back to the four questions. Where now, where do you want to go, et cetera, how do you get there, what's a win? I love the fact that there's that, what, you didn't call it what's a win, like what's a, what's a whatever, I call it a win, what's a win? And I, on so many of the pages in here, you can take a look at it, on so many of the pages in here, I put in, couldn't we do this a little more quickly? And I, and I, and I would, I'd ask you to listen to that, but I'd ask you to listen to it with a grain of salt, because I always want to do things more quickly and sooner, and I think it would be a mistake. There is, there is right now in the United States, a, a school district that is blowing up, because they have diverted funds from crumbling buildings, and everybody has a device right now, but their buildings are crumbling, and some of the devices aren't working, and their internet can't support it. So when I say, can we speed it up more quickly, just nod your head and say, well, okay, Rick just likes to do things more quickly. I love how this thing rolls out, partly because you all heard her mention the power users thing. And people who are like on the edge and say, yeah, I want to try this, and there's a process for that, and it begins to unroll, but what I like a lot about that is, that, and you just alluded to it a few seconds ago, is that every step of the way, there is somebody in place to give support. Because there are early adopters, and there are people who will, okay, I'll finally get in, and there are people that are just digging in their heels, and all of this, for example, for teachers, is aligning with the assessments that are coming. This is all to be lined up. Furthermore, I like, I've got so many notes here, and I really, I'm not going to talk a lot, I, I, I love the fact that we are testing current technological fluency. Where are you right now?
Exactly.
For the teachers and the kids.
Yes, and then just to continue to move them across the.
Yeah, so there is a rubric, there will be a rubric that's set up by third grade at the end, to call you technologically fluent, you should know this. Sixth grade, you should know this. And I love the fact in the report, I mean, I know all this isn't in stone yet, but it's either the creation of or the finding of these self-paced assessments, so my kid, sixth grade, fourth grade, he's ahead in this, he's behind in that. They're self-paced, and yet, the teacher has the, what do we call it, the, it's not the data wall, the.
Dashboard. Dashboard.
Dashboard, the teacher has the dashboard that knows, that's awesome. He's up to speed in that.
And then can make instructional decisions to support wherever that child is.
Yeah. I, I tried to summarize all these notes. I love that the phase rollout with devices, policies, professional development, tech literacy, teacher literacy, clarifying the wins, beginning with how students learn. The Columbus Dispatch, I have the, today's Columbus Dispatch up here, not because I'm reading it, just want to clarify, the head article is that the Columbus Library in 2009, digital material was 51,000. This year, it is almost a million. From '09 to '14, it's gone from 50,000 units to almost a million. Digital is not coming. Digital's here. And so we can all talk about, you know, are we up with it, we don't, I don't know. I just know that when we open the door, and the teacher's got the capability of seeing what's going on, and correcting, and differentiating, there are apps that can help you differentiate your lesson plan. That's all I'm going to say right now. Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, you know, that key piece is that teacher, that's the key piece is.
Well, and I would say, while we're talking about teachers, at the Bulleton on Saturday, I was speaking to a media specialist, and she's very excited about this. Can you tell us a little bit, I think people still think that media specialist librarian just checks out books? Can you kind of let us know what a huge part they're going to play in this?
Oh, my goodness, we had several media specialists as part of the work, we had one from middle school and one from high school, so I, two, but they are outstanding in the work that they do. And it's, it's not just checking out books, most certainly, although our media specialists do an excellent job with getting books into the hands of our, of our children. But they lead teacher professional development, they lead students through, you know, ways in which to find resources, you know, how to write papers, how to search the, search the internet, but just definitely building that technology fluency and that understanding, it's just amazing. I don't know how specific, if Stephanie Donough wants to chime in, she leads the media specialist, so if you'd like to chime in on additional things that you know that they do?
I think that depends on building the use of teachers and students, and they, you know, and upgrade the students, go to the library a lot, use all of the devices, and the, the library media specialist or teachers first and foremost, I don't know how many of you are aware of that, it can't even be a library media specialist, which is very , and then there's additional, if you can come back to that. It's a very, especially, of the 21st-century skills and fluency.
Thank you. I have a couple of things, I am so, so excited about this, and thank you for all your hard work, I can't imagine, after reading this and rereading it, and sometimes falling asleep, I'll be honest. I think some things that would help, although we said we saw the classroom setup there, I think some people are very visual, and to see an actual classroom with furniture, maybe with kids, would be beneficial.
I have one of those.
Okay.
Stole from a magazine, perfect image.
Okay, that'll work, we can put that up. Also, I've been fortunate enough to use Google Education, fantastic, would love to see Schoology, would love like a little 10-minute thing here, maybe you could show us like how fantastic it is, I'm just fascinated by that, I think that would, would also help the public. How are we going to address kids that don't have devices at home, or need to work after hours of school, or things like that?
And that's something, actually, that's in the policy, especially if a student doesn't have internet access, because it's one thing if we're able to send the device home with the student, but if they don't have internet access. So part of the plan includes looking at some government funding and ways in which to access opportunities that the city of Westerville provides, and then what can we do as a district to provide that? So that is part of the plan, not to, I think I just cut you off, though, I'm sorry. Do you have more? Go ahead.
No, I think that's good.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
No problem.
Comments before we move on to the next piece?
Just real quickly, I, the people, I mean, we read the report, can you just say, like, real quickly, how this was done? Just let folks know about the, the planning sessions, et cetera.
Yes, back in October, our educational consultant, Glenn Meeks, came and met with a variety of stakeholders, he met with teachers, he met with principals, he met with district administration, to get his head around kind of where we are. He also. He also worked with the Planning Lab, the first Planning Lab, which was in early November, to tease that out, and really get some good data. You'll see surveys, the Planning Lab is representative of those surveys. We also talked about, okay, what do we want it to look like? I mean, we spent half a morning saying, okay, what should a middle school look like? What does it need? What would be important? The high schools did that, the elementaries did that, and actually, we broke elementary into two because we had the K-2, and then the 3-5. And then we talked about, okay, well, if that's our vision, if that's what learning and teaching needs to look like, what do we need to happen to get us there? And that's when we had all of the factors. We identified all of them, we were very technologically savvy, we had Post-its everywhere with little stickers. And then we identified, okay, what we thought were the most important, and that's how they got divided into the three segments, you know, the high impact, medium impact, and low impact. And then, the bulk of the second Planning Lab, which was early December, okay, so what are we going to do about it? Now that we need to share the roadmap, where do we start? We start with the board. Step one. Okay, step two, talk to our teachers. Step three, inform the community. And so, we had small working groups that went through each of those. At the end of the two days, everybody went through that process. Did this group miss anything? Should we have included something? And then budgets were suggested to support that work. And then Glenn put together all of our thoughts. At the end of December, the executive team reviewed it, I think the first or second week of January, made a few tweaks here and there. Budgetary had some conversations with Bart. And then, we presented it to the final Planning Lab, at the end of January, excuse me. And walked through it, I mean, really walked through it. And we had questions, we had concerns, we had suggestions, we had typos, just really looking through the document and saying, yes, this is extremely representative of the work that we've spent the past several months on. You're welcome.
Just a quick background, and the gentleman who was the consultant, he spent his entire career building technology infrastructures in school buildings as a technology engineer guy, AV systems. He was involved in Worthington Kilborn when it was built. That's his background. And over the years of doing that for 30 years, he came to the realization that they were planning and building and putting all this stuff in, and then going back in and it's not getting used, or it was frustrating teachers. So he modified the process. He's not a teaching and learning person, he'll tell you that upfront. And so, he modified the procedure. What we benefit from is, he's got an engineer's mindset to problem solving, and documentation, and covering everything. He relies on us for the teaching and learning side of it, and that's the meeting of the mind. And I think that's why it works well, as a process for us. And so, what we're looking to do is, we're beginning to roll it out, here's engagement process. On the budget side, what I'd say to you is, I'm confident that this is 90% accurate within that budget. We're recycling dollars, and we're using dollars that the board put in the five-year forecast. This is a lead piece for us. If we, like anything, hit a spot where finances are what we need to do, needs more board input, we'll bring that here. It's our mission to work this within the budget we have and the timeline we have. If we run into a hiccup, and we need to revisit that, that might mean slowing down, that might mean changing ratios, that may mean some change in order to keep us within the confines of the five-year forecast we want to be in, and using the dollars that have allocated to us the appropriate way. If we need to modify from that, we'll be back to the board to have that discussion. We won't make assumptions about moving forward, at least on the dollars piece. So, it'll be messy, there'll be mistakes, we will chunk it. I want to go fast, too. My experience with going fast is take a baby step or two, make sure it's working right. So as Jen said, rather than 90 power users, 1,000 devices on August 15th, how about 15 power users and fewer devices, and we'll move it along. The first thing we have to figure out, how's that room design work for teachers? And what kinds of devices do we want to use at which grade levels? And that's part of the first assessment. So don't go buy 1,000 devices, figure out from teachers at various levels which devices we want first. So we'll chunk it, and then we'll go really fast.
Okay. It's very exciting. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
John, we're going to move on to facilities and programs, and we had allocated only about 20 minutes for this. We're not doing very well on any of our timeframes for the evening. But at any rate, John, tell us what you have in mind as regards elementary programs and facilities.
Probably best if I do from over here for.
Yeah, I think that's good.
So, this is an extension, again, from the December retreat, where we talked about facilities and programming and what we might want to do. The background to that is, at the December retreat, we presented to the board three options on facilities. Option C was the one they asked us to move forward, so this is an extension from where we are, from that meeting. So here's what I'd like to accomplish this evening for you. First is, want to provide clarification from the administration of the board to the community about what our intent is with the current magnet program. So that's one question I want us to address this evening. The other one is discuss the status of elementary redistricting. I'll give you a little background history there. And then the third thing I want to accomplish this evening is discuss additional program options, and some potential use for facilities that we currently have. So that's where I want to get to this evening. So let's start with elementary, current elementary programs, what we affectionately call magnet schools. Here's where we're at, and this is, everybody knows this, at Emerson, Hanby, and at Robert Frost, we run those three strands right now. At this point, this consists of third, fourth, and fifth graders, they exit out through, we absorb those grade levels. So third, fourth, and fifth are in those buildings, in those magnet programs now. K through two, oh, excuse me, one and two, K not, K is incorrect, we didn't have kindergarten there. It's absorbed back in elementary schools. And here's what we're recommending, and make it clear to everybody, is we're recommending that the current students in those programs today are able to exit outside of fifth grade. And I bring that forward because there's been differences of opinion as to what the stance of the position is. So I want to be clear, and then have a communication plan to those staff members, those students, and those parents, that the programs that they're in today, is third, fourth, and fifth graders will be supported through the end of the current third grader's fifth grade year. So that's a simple piece there. So unless the board feels differently about that, or you want to have more conversation about it, that would be our intent to move forward and make sure that's clear. I think that's consistent with at least our understanding of what position was. Okay? Good? So let's, go ahead.
Give me a second, John.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't cut you off.
Go ahead, what was your question?
Can you back up there a second? Are you saying this? Back up a second, tell me your last couple sentences.
So what I'm saying is, that the students who are currently in third, fourth, and fifth grade, at Emerson, Hanby, and Robert Frost, in the three current magnet programs we have, would all be able to complete that program through fifth grade. So current third graders, which is the last grade level still in there, will complete the program. So it'll remain intact with those teachers through the third grader's fifth grade year.
Okay.
Okay?
Is this coming to us as a proposal? Is this coming to us as a done deal, what for a while was called the magnet sunsetting?
This essentially clarifies that, is my understanding when I came into the district, was what was inherited. That this was the intent. And my experience has been, not everybody was clear that the intent with the current magnets was that. There was, I'll ask teachers today, I've had teachers ask me in the last couple of weeks and months, what happens next year? Are we back? And so, there's not, it doesn't seem to me there's been consistent, clear communication that that was the intent. And so, my understanding, and understanding of my staff, was that was always the intent.
Yes, and you're saying it very clearly, which I agree with you, I don't think it's ever been said so concise, clearly. But it's good that you're putting it out that way, because that was always the feeling that I had, too.
So, as we walk through this set of presentations?
I didn't have that feeling.
Okay.
As we walk through the presentations, the other parts of this, I think you'll see the overlap to some of the other issues. So, at least at this point in my familiar district, no one's presented to me anything different about what was intended to happen with the current magnets. So let me, if you would allow me, maybe if I get to the second phase, it'll help clarify what my understanding was, and if there's a difference, we can go back.
I feel what I read.
Is that okay if I do that?
I didn't like it, but that's what I thought was happening. Right, I think so, yeah.
Here's the other part of the history. There's a tangling of things in this little bit of a mess, okay? Let's talk about the redistricting, the recent history. So what happened, as I've asked people, and read documents, was the redistricting of the elementary schools was triggered by the fact that the magnet schools were being absorbed back into their home schools. So those first and second graders that have gone back, this third grade class, if you pull them out of the four magnet schools that existed, and put them back in their home schools, that changed the enrollment balance, and I'll show you some numbers around that, okay? So essentially, my understanding, as I talk to my staff, the redistricting of the elementaries was driven by the fact that the magnet school kids were being absorbed back into the regular buildings. So there was then the issue to do that. The goal was to balance enrollment around the building capacity. The group that was looking at redistricting, the information I got from that, those meetings, indicated that there's a higher priority to neighborhood schools, that was a high priority, neighborhood schools. I'm not real excited about my kid being shipped three elementary schools away. Balance along demographic numbers was less important, in the priorities of the people looking at redistricting. At this time last year, the plan that was being developed around redistricting called for using Hanby and Emerson as traditional elementary school buildings, which would then be filled through redistricting. So, your kid might be at Wilder, or Whittier, or Alcott, or Faust this year, but because of redistricting, to redistribute the kids and have enough seats, and not overload the other elementary schools, we're going to put you in these two buildings. That plan never came forward to the board, that recommendation was put on hold last spring before my arrival. And I don't mean to make this about me, but what was shared with me was, the intent was, let's put a hold on redistricting, the current state of affairs, and for some people, that understanding might include the magnet schools. As part of that understanding, I understand how to get commingled, tangled up together, but let's put that aside, and not do anything until the new superintendent's identified. So I've arrived, and my efforts have been to try and understand the complexities of the problem, and where to go next. So that's how I've started to understand the problem, and where we're at. So where we're at is, we have third, fourth, and fifth graders at Emerson and Hanby, and Robert Frost, in magnet programs. We need a clear understanding of what's going to happen there. And we have elementary enrollment, that if it continues down this path, what's going to be the need to redistrict? So here's how we've packaged the two of those together. In order to address the current need for redistricting, our suggestion is that we use a school choice model at the elementary level. And I'll show you how this works. What we really want, what we're really trying to do is align building space allocation to enrollment at elementary. So here's the numbers. The October count of this year, which is the official count by which we get funded by the state, by OD, when you back out from, when you back out kindergarten, because kindergarten's not part of this piece, the, I'm sorry, preschool, when you back preschool out of the numbers, our October count this year for elementary was 6,346 students.
Including kindergarteners.
Including kindergarteners, thank you. It does not include preschool, which is in a lot of the cropper projections that Jeff LaRose shares with the board. The total capacity, including all the elementaries and Emerson and Hanby, totals, by our numbers, over 7,200 seats. So that differential is 870 extra elementary seats, when you use all the regular elementaries and Emerson and Hanby. And I don't mean that regular in a derogatory sense, just when you put the whole package together. That's where last spring's recommendation was heading, was to allocate 7,200 seats to enrollment system right now that has 6,300 students. It seems, from our perspective, a little top-heavy to the numbers of seats to the enrollment, particularly when both sets of enrollment data we look at, the cropper numbers that Jeff LaRose gets, and the numbers in our five-year forecast, indicate an enrollment decline. So over the course of the next five, in fact, in the five-year budget, five-year forecast, if you look carefully, I think at some point, we dropped below 6,000 students. So if those projections hold true, that's where our numbers will be across the district. If you back Emerson's 250 seats out of the numbers, and leave Hanby, you've dropped your elementary capacity of all the buildings to 6,966. I'm using a range for building, for total capacity of between 90 and 95%. In other words, if your enrollment exceeds 95% of capacity, you start to feel constricted in your space, and no flexibility, that buildings need. When you drop below 90%, you got to start asking yourself the hard question, if you have an overabundance of resource to one part of the system. In other words, if our enrollment's going to drop to a point where we have less than 6,000 students, but we've allocated 7,200 seats, we've spread resources pretty thin. All those buildings have to have principals, secretaries, custodians, teachers, the whole shooting match to run them. And at some point, that has to be a question of, is that the best investment of our resources? So this is a matter of capacity, not programming at this point. So our recommendation would be, maintain the current elementary boundaries, not to redistrict. And the way you do that is you retain Hanby and its 400, roughly 400, 450 seats, and use that as a school choice, open enrollment magnet. I'm not wedded to whatever term we want to use. If our community and our board feels magnet's the best word for it, then magnet is the word for it, as far as I'm concerned. It's really about elementary capacity and disruption to the system. Certainly in my viewpoint, and in working with my staff, redistricting across the entire system for those numbers is disruptive to too many people for little gain. And puts some people in some awkward positions, and I think that was some of the heat you were feeling, or we were feeling. This allows the opportunity to maintain a kind of program in elementary that people valued, not at the level we have before, but frankly, the numbers don't really warrant that allocation of resources. What we would envision, moving forward with this concept, was we would now put a team of administrators, teachers, parents, and community members together, to start defining the focus and best practice, similar to what we've done in the past. If they want to pick up on where we're at with those programs, something new, something, whatever that is, that that team would start to define that, Hanby as an open enrollment school for us. Along that, there has to be some district parameters around funding, has to be policy considerations about who gets access. Those were some of the friction points for people in the community, about who got access, who didn't, and how is that going to happen, how are those seats allocated? I can share with you, for example, in playing around with numbers, if you take the 400 to 450 seats that are currently at Hanby, and distribute those in some manner based on current elementary school size, so rather than saying there's 400 seats across the district, say, to the larger elementary schools, you all have X number of seats, medium size, this number, medium size, a smaller elementary, this number, you can redistribute the students in the district to Hanby, and take the enrollment down to all the elementary buildings to a point where they're in that 90 to 95%. So it evens out the distribution on a choice model, for people to say, I want my kid in that program. It doesn't bother me that it's this kind of facility, it doesn't disrupt what I want to do now, and it doesn't make everybody else have to redistrict for that particular piece. So that's, and we would anticipate that being something that we would want to open fall of 2015. We need a year of planning. Frankly, if the board turned to me today and said, I want it open next fall, I'd work my tail off to get it done, but we would trip and make mistakes, and probably have some fires to put out. I don't believe that's in the best interest of kids that would be in there. I'm not sure what we would be asking parents to send their children to on a choice model. So, in the balancing of where we're at, the resources we have, the best use, allocation of resources we have, for this issue of elementary redistricting, we're trying to marry... So, in the balancing of where we're at, the resources we have, the best use, allocation of resources we have, for this issue of elementary redistricting, we're trying to marry, eliminating that need, long-term, remember you have enrollment decline in elementary, falling back on programming option that people seem to value, it's at a smaller scale, no doubt about it. So that's how the wedding of those issues comes together and what we're suggesting to do. So I'm not going to go to the next part, I'm going to stop here, which really gets at the Hanby, magnet, elementary redistricting. And I'll back up, and I'm going to be fair to myself in this. What I was asked when I inherited the position was, it's about elementary redistricting. That's what was put on the shelf. And so that's what I'm trying to move forward, and that's what our staff is looking at. Questions, comments, thoughts, darts?
I think you're on target. I know Cindy and I were involved in that pretty heavily, and...
Thank you.
And we agreed, we both agreed that, you know, we put it on the back burner, so...
And I don't want anybody to misconstrue...
Am I right, Cindy?
What are you agreeing to, Carol?
Yes.
What are you agreeing to? That, yes, it was put on the back burner, yes, it was not articulated well, yes, we like this plan, yes, we need to... Tell me exactly what you are agreeing to.
That we would not redistrict the way we were at any redistricting. We were at a high priority, as Dr. Kellogg said, of having the elementary students, and the parents told us this, if all possible to go to their neighborhood schools, but of course, that can't always happen. But on the other hand, we did not want them to be bussed all over the city, and that was what was going to happen, and so...
Well, what caused the overcrowding? It's because we sent them back, right? And I was part of the realignment committee...
Right.
And worked with Jeff LaRose. And Jeff, remind me again, because I think, and I'm sure Cropper's right now, but we thought we were going to have extra students. I mean, we thought we were going to have higher enrollment. True, not this year, last year. So I think that sometimes can be off. I also, you know, watching what's going on at City Council, I am a little concerned with some building that's going to take place, especially if we're sitting at the cozy 95 Couple of thoughts right off the top of my head. When I hear schools of choice, I think of more than one. I'm thinking out loud, I apologize.
I, yeah, I, this is the way, John, you may remember, we've talked about this, and I, the way I couch it is, this feels an awful lot like just playing defense. And, you know, people were upset about redistricting, setting, closing magnets, I mean, all of that levy, emergency levy, almost all a mix. You just missed most of the fun.
I read most of it.
And then, yeah, and then now you're coming into it. But it's a huge, it's a huge concern of mine to, and I mean, we're all friends here, so we're all talking, to go from four schools of choice to one nebulous school of choice. And I have always said, and I, man, I appreciate this being recorded, because I will continue to say this, a school of choice or magnet or whatever call it, I agree with that, is not a better than, it is other than. It is a different model. It's a different lens through which rigorous academic options are being taught. And so sometimes we will hear, and we've heard said, well, if it's so good at that school, then it should be done at all the schools. Well, the point is, for a school of choice to deliver the same rigorous academics, but you're just looking through a certain lens, a fine arts lens, a foreign language, culture lens, a STEM lens, whatever.
So, I would make the case that the design model to a magnet program like that, that design process shouldn't be any different from any of the other elementaries.
Oh, I...
And that the leaderships, the community involvement, and we have that going on. We have buildings that, for example, are starting to put in the toe, Charrington's a good example, toe in the water with STEM. I know that Ann Hurst is putting their toe in the water around 21st century teaching and learning.
Right.
So the design of a school with a focus, a lens, and that was the power of the magnets, as they were committed to a lens. My charge to our principals under the own your building mantra that I give them is, the same thing should be, we should be able to replicate that same thing. And that's what makes it not better, but the same, different lens.
Through whatever lens they're passionate about.
Correct.
Yeah, awesome, yes.
The intent isn't to create a better, and the intent of the proposal shouldn't be viewed as my view as superintendent about the value of magnet schools, whether or not we should have them or not. This is about resource, resource allocation, and making sure that we have, we're making decisions that are in the best interest of the community and the kids. So you could, so alternate proposals could include Emerson and Hanby. Let's just put the magnets the way they were. I would tell you, the reason I'm not recommending that is because I think it's an overabundance of seats, the elementary enrollment. There is no set of numbers I've looked at, in the five-year forecast or in the Cropper reports, those numbers are different. The five-year forecast has actually been more accurate to the October counts the last couple of years than the Cropper numbers, and we've talked with Jeff about that. And those numbers do take into account building initiatives going on across the district that we account into our numbers as we go along. So it doesn't remove that flexibility. What I'm looking at is the trend lines, the resources, and how do we best put that all together in a package that meets the community needs? So I'm all ears to alternatives. I'll tell you, we scrubbed them down pretty good from our perspective, and we thought this was probably the best way to go. Not defense by any means, but how do we move this forward in a means that satisfies those parameters and gives us a better look for it?
I would say, I see our school district to be a beacon, one where families want to come to, and I think the magnets were that, and I see that coming back. I think we lost several families, lots of families, one would argue why. I believe in this team. I think we're a beacon. People come here for those special schools.
And hence, the proposal includes maintaining at least one of those at the elementary level?
I'm wondering, you know that you have a group of people on the board who feel very strongly connected to the magnet program as it exists.
The board and the community, yes.
Yes. But I'm thinking, you know, as you're presenting your thinking around this, it becomes difficult to determine where to set our feet without having a better sense of what you're looking at as regards the whole. Because right now, we're only talking about Hanby versus, Hanby, Emerson, Longfellow, Central, you know, we're looking at it in that lens, where I would suggest before we should, you know, really enter into the discussion, let's hear what the whole thing is, and then, you know, we may come back and say, ha, 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 we like the four, or we may say, we like these, these, these. I would like to hear the rest.
Thank you.
I agree.
I think that's probably a good segue, because there's other portions of what we're looking at. So, under the category of additional opportunities that this creates, right? So as we went through strategic planning, some of the themes around other educational options across the system for kids, access and how all families should access that, using those key themes, one of the areas that we think needs a good review is our gifted program in grades three through eight. If you look at our value-added data, it was a place in the pork car we got a seat, there's a variety of reasons for that. And then the other one would be around the idea of looking at possibility of all-day, every-day kindergarten as a support for early intervention strategies in school readiness, which is pretty clear throughout our strategic plan. Again, if you go to the demographics of our district and the changing demographics, the need for early invention is just increasing over time. And so we feel that need, and we think one strategy for that is all-day, every-day, all-day, every-day kindergarten. So, under those, we'd like to put a team together to start looking at current gifted services, grades three through eight for this next year, and to bring forward to the board and administration by next fall, late next fall, a set of recommendations regarding program enhancements, improvements in that area to get out improved results, and that might involve potential space use at an Emerson. So, if we don't gobble up that space for another program and utilize it, it leaves room for possibility of other programming. Example might be, I'm not advocating for a gifted school, but a gifted center where kids may spend part of their time, along those lines. So, if that facility fills a need in gifted, or Longfellow fills a need in gifted in that program, we have space available. If the plan calls for an additional space, we still have space available and can revisit its use for other programming. For example, if we thought at that point, the next logical thing is additional magnets at the elementary, we have that possibility. Without it, we don't have that possibility. So it's stair steps to approach the facility's use moving forward, and whether or not that's a place where we might benefit. Middle school is a place, we've heard a great deal about lack of programming, lack of opportunities for kids, maybe that facility fills a need there. The other one relates to all-day kindergarten. We're preparing a survey to determine interest level from kindergarten parents who are registering, looking at variables about if we had some classrooms, using Longfellow, for example, and you had five or six classrooms of all-day kindergarten there, gives you the opportunity to add some all-day kindergarten, see how that goes, see the impact on student results. You can offer that on a sliding scale based on income, fixed number. Important to note, with the budget cap from the state as it stands currently, we wouldn't get additional funding if some kids went from half-day to all-day, but it does add some programming possibilities for us, and we think there's some ways to use current staffing patterns to keep us from adding a lot of FT in order to support that. So again, that's a place where we want to look at possibly piloting in sometime next year. So based on the survey data coming back, what parents say would meet, they might be something to be interested in, we might be able to put together a couple of classrooms of all-day kindergarten and place them at one of the others, one of the other schools that are available to us. That might look, I might not even start at the start of the school, that might be a second semester all-day kindergarten beginning, could be midway through the fall as we got programming and got a sense of what would work. So it leaves us some flexibility for other kinds of programming that we're seeing in the district that might require space, that might need other needs for other students across the continuum, and bring some more value to more students than in past practice. And again, for me, it's driven back by the numbers on enrollment. How many seats do you want to allocate, K5? How many resources do you want to put there? Because every other building is another principal, is another custodian, is another secretary to one end. So, that's where the big picture comes from, and I appreciate you bringing me back to that, when that's kind of the whole enchilada. It does not mean, moving forward, you might go past or have additional space available if you wanted to grow magnet programs. I'll tell you where our enrollment squeeze is right now, it's middle school. That's where our capacity exceeds space. And so, where's that in the conversation? Other program capacity pieces coming along, as we do the Straight A grant at secondary level, that has implications for space use in the future as well, as we try and put programs in place for kids around advanced manufacturing, logistics, and health, as we're part of that grant. So, we're in the lead in that part, in that large grant across the state, as we're putting together a proposal to be a center for one of the four centers that a Straight A grant under the health component, and some exciting program there. I don't know what the space needs are going to be yet. So that, it's a stair-step approach to riding the ship and taking care of some of the immediate needs and keeping room for long-term needs.
Let me see if I've got this right. You are looking at predominantly a year's study and the identification of direction and so forth. That's kind of what your thinking is around this approach that you're talking about. Within that are a couple of givens, and one is that, you know, we're not looking at that elementary redistricting thing. Another given on that is that we do fully intend to utilize Hanby, Emerson, and Longfellow. Another given around that is that even as that study is going forward and those best practices are being considered, the other schools within the district will still be pursuing their approach toward developing focus and emphasis. So, the larger context on that, and stop me anytime I get it wrong...
I get it right.
...where I'm synopsizing what you're saying, the larger focus, and I'm going to steal your metaphor, Tracy, on the beacon part, is what you're, what you think this does is let you create a larger beacon at the elementary level. Now, then, within that context, as you've positioned it, you talked about a tiered approach. The first tier is, you're recommending that we initially begin studying Hanby as regards what makes the best sense at this point in time for a specific magnet program within Hanby for its 450 seats. You're also suggesting, your recommendation is, we study all-day kindergarten, probably at Longfellow. And you're also suggesting in that first tier, that we consider Emerson possibly as an expansion of the gifted program that has resided there, and the input of different forms of gifted programming. That's where that tier one is. If those things don't pan out, if the numbers don't work, if the approaches are not popular or not desirable in this particular community, then tier two is, we're still pursuing focus and emphasis at all those buildings. We are still not looking at the redistricting, but we are still looking at keeping those buildings open. The problem is only, lovely problem, the issue is only around what specific types of specialized programming goes into those buildings. And you're suggesting that in tier two, we could consider additional magnet options as regards middle school possibly, Straight A possibly, other components. Do I have it right?
Yeah, I think you've done well with it in terms of conciseness, yes. Trying to protect the resources we have, the long-term budget we have, and reprogramming needs in a reasonable fashion. And under the guise of beacon, yes, a magnet school that's a beacon for elementary would be wonderful, a magnet for what gifted education, three through eight should look like in the state would be a wonderful place, a magnet, a beacon for what high school education around Straight A fund and credentialing of kids and making them college and career-ready would also be a wonderful beacon for us to have. So those are all pieces that I think, if we want to define ourselves as a system and use the resources we have under the five-year forecast and all the capital things we have, makes sense. And that's where it comes from. Not meant to be a value statement about any other components, meant to be a broad-stroke approach to meeting those needs, but in a manner that doesn't blow the lid off everything and back us in a corner long-term. So the most immediate we'd see, we would see planning for, we'll call it a magnet, at Hanby to open in 15, and putting a community-based group to that design. And that design process should be the exact same thing any of our schools are going through to define them, and what defines them in the community, and for their students to get the outcomes we want. That's really where we want to be.
So those elementary schools, right now, we are saying to them, go through this design process. We are wanting them to own it.
From my perspective, when I say to my building principals, own it, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
And I'm seeing individual leadership teams at buildings start to go down those paths and build those definitions. And I would not say that I've been explicit in that expectation, but that's the intent. And I don't want to be explicit in telling building principals how to do the work. I'm explicit about, I expect results, and I expect leadership.
So that's not to say, then, that we may only, that we will have only one magnet. There might be a STEM magnet, there might be, depending on what the principals... There might be a STEM magnet, there might be, depending on what the principals come up with.
But let's be careful around jargon.
Yeah.
Magnet for people seem to imply open enrollment in any school.
I'm using that term right now.
Which is different. This model doesn't say all the elementaries now are open, we have open enrollment in elementary, but this is not to say this is a school choice model across the district. That's not what we're going towards. I'm saying, if you're at your home school, you should expect a level of service at your home school no different than any other school we got.
And that's where I was going, John Carroll. We are saying that to the elementary schools. We want to release you, however we phrase it, but we're not saying it to the staff at Emerson. We might say it to the staff at Hanby. We no longer are saying it to Central College and Longfellow. So, we are trying to, just my words, and it's entirely okay to fudge with it. We want to create beacons, but let's first shut down the beacons that we already have.
The beacons that exist still exist.
But in the proposal, it is to phase, it is to phase them out.
That's.
And so...
That's what was inherited.
Yeah, and I get that you inherited, believe me. I get that, truly.
That's not to say, that's not to say, that the team we put around Hanby to say, what do you want this to be, doesn't take the current model and the current programming and say, we want to rebuild that in the same manner. It's not to say they don't do that. I'm not here to say that that's, that they can't do that.
Right.
Here to say that the timing of that has to be, would have to be fall 15 from my estimation in order to do it well.
And I think what I'm saying is that we are telling the schools that exist right now, you know, name it and claim it and be jazzed about it and be excited about it and own it and develop it, but not you and maybe not you. I...
Not sure I follow by not you or not you.
Not, sorry Emerson, not you. We have dismantled you long enough that we don't think you're resurrectable.
No.
Or we don't think the numbers are there to resurrect.
If the programming in Hanby, if they, if the model choice reflects more of an Emerson approach than what Hanby's been doing, doesn't matter to me what approach to take or if they take multiple approaches. The approach they take is of their design and the direction they want to go. If they want to have three strands, three strands, two strands, two strands. What I'm saying is, I don't know that it makes economic sense, I'll put it there, to distribute the resources that much over the elementary programming and not consider other programming options that have needs as well. So, again, it's not a value statement as to whose program is the best and whose do we want to keep. That's for others to sort out. It's about resource, resource allocation at the end of the day. Now, remember where we were supposed to be a year ago? The recommendation was no magnets, Emerson and Hanby is traditional elementaries, redistrict everybody to make it work.
Oh, I, yeah, I fully remember that.
Backing up the bus all the way to reinventing, I don't know if it's all four, I'm sure there's people out there that love to see all four magnets come back, I think that would be a huge thinning of resources at elementary against enrollment. Yes, the programs are wonderful, but that many buildings across that many students doesn't make great economic sense to me. Now, if we want some of those threads, let's look at the Robert Frost experience. The Robert Frost experience was built out of the concept that there was a greater thirst for programming that could fit into buildings. So, the model foldover was to say, let's look at another elementary and build that with another elementary thread. If that's the direction we want to go, we can, that committee, we can continue that kind of thinking. But should that be from us to buildings or from buildings with their communities internally saying, this is what we'd like to have? That is kind of a critical question. And actually, that poser came to me in a meeting with a teacher at one of the magnets. He said to me, shouldn't this be driven by the teachers and the school community?
And that's what I'm saying, that we have schools in which the community within the school is trying to drive a certain direction. And in some instances, we are saying, no.
No? I'm saying, I'm suggesting you don't need that many elementary buildings for that many kids. I'm suggesting you don't need to redistrict if you put a school choice model at one of the elementaries. That gives you enough building space for all the kids, keeps you from redistricting, and it does put back in place back on the table, something that at this point is, seems to be off the table, because there is nothing in front of us that says, we're going back in that direction. Nobody has said, third grade, fifth graders don't exit out, no one has said, put first and second graders back in.
Where do we say that?
We haven't.
If somebody wanted to.
That's what this is about. If there's a different perspective, a different direction to go, what I'm presenting to you is based on what I understand to be the resources, the logic behind the proposal. It's the board's will to go in a different direction or to give us a different way to go.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would say part of the reason we're in this predicament is because we didn't listen to the public. And I know I am sitting up here because of the public and I am here to be the voice of the public. I know what my feelings are, I know what I've heard from people. I personally am not ready to go forward with this. I think maybe firsthand, it would be nice if you could hear what the public wants. I understand it sounds like you think more dollars. We're also talking about putting kindergarten, there's a principal, I don't know if we could somehow do partial, couple kindergarten classes within the buildings, maybe to satisfy that need. Have we looked at, read something recently that they're saying all day kindergarten isn't any more beneficial than half day, but preschool is more beneficial because it's early on. I'm very hesitant to house a gifted program in a building alone. I don't think that's a good idea, I think we need to look into that a little further. I truly, truly appreciate all of the hard work and the effort and remember our team skills as we sit up here tonight. I just, this is a work session, I'm not comfortable. I don't know about the rest of you.
Well, I think you do know.
Well, I...
I don't think she does.
And she knows me.
She knows you, but there are others.
Yeah, but I just...
Here's what I'm thinking as process.
Look to the direction.
It is clear that we have a fairly wide disparity and it's clear that there needs to be more thinking on the part of board members around the direction they want to go. It's also clear that whatever direction we choose to take with these buildings, we need to make a decision on how we're going to proceed with that direction within the next few months, or few weeks, so that we can begin whatever design process may be necessary. I am suggesting, because this was a work session, you know, we're not taking any action tonight, we're not doing anything around that, I would suggest that we come back to this discussion and also come back to secondary programs and staffing at another work session within the next couple, three weeks, maybe four weeks, within the next few weeks, so that we can recapture the discussion. Because my concern at this point is, we're going to go round and round in our particular senses of what should be. And I know for myself, speaking purely individually, I want to see the bigger picture, K-12, as we look at that, which would also require that discussion of secondary programs. So, I really think that for us to try and force a, an approach this evening would not be helpful
Yeah.
To you or to the members of the public or to anyone else. Because now that this, you know, will be out there, it'll be televised, it'll be covered in the paper and so forth, there will be a lot of people with a lot to say. And they will not just be magnet parents, there will be gifted parents, there will be parents who are concerned about middle school options, there will be a lot to say. And we need to be listening to that. So, I know we need to move on this, but I would suggest tonight, we need to say the next movement is, as you would put it, a baby step toward additional discussion.
Are there, is the will of the board that we go back and develop any other kind of concepts to bring forward for part of that discussion, as alternatives to this, based on some of the feelings? Would you rather just chew on what I presented here for a little bit longer?
I think it would be helpful, as I listened to the comments that were made this evening, I think it would be helpful to, again, you know, bring us this conceptualization that you have, but also to bring us information regarding, based on what you've heard tonight, the reinstitutionalization of the magnet programs that once existed. And when I say information about that, what does that mean that we can do and that we cannot do? So, for instance, we know that by doing that, we would be recreating programs that we all love a great deal and that were highly successful. We also know that if we did that, we would be slamming the door on options, additional options for gifted kids and additional options at the middle school.
Well, we don't, we don't know.
In those buildings, we would know that.
We don't, we don't know, because if you can, if he can just kind of rework some ideas, we don't necessarily know that we are closing the door to XYZ, we might need to look at...
Well, in those buildings, we would be. If we went back to what we had...
We might need to look at XYZ in a different way.
There's two, two parts of the resources. One is the building, then one is the allocation of staff and the number of staff across the number of students. And that's a big part of the driver for me, sitting there looking at five-year forecasts, all the other opportunities are going to be in front of us and what we need to do. So, if you, if at the end of the day, through public participation and everything else, and I'm, I'm telling people how to do it, I'll just engage the people in the discussion. At the end of the day, if the will of folks is to go backwards, not backwards, but to reinstate where we're at, what you're going to be doing is spreading that resource of two, three, or four magnet school buildings to that number of kids. So, you're diluting the pool and available resources, not just space, but staff, books, technology across the lawn. This is similar to consolidation anyplace. It's always painful. When you close someone's building and combine it, it's always painful and I get that. But it comes, at a certain point, it's about utilization of resources and dollars.
Well, and that's why I appreciate Nancy's idea, but I would add a middle possibility there. She said bring back, and we're talking about all four, just bring back all four. Why not look at as another, as third rail, revitalizing the two that still exist? Instead of consolidating to one proposal, instead of going back to four, blowing it all up...
That essentially is what this offers. It offers the, offers the distinct strategy of putting Hanby back in place with its 450 students. It leaves open the possibility for other kinds of programming, which if it doesn't bear fruit, we can revisit extending the magnet at the elementary to those other buildings. But I'm going to always say, I got to remind you that if you do that, it still goes back to that essential question about resources to that number of kids and how far you're going to stretch the dollars that you have from the community. And that is a driver for me and will continue to be a driver for me. Won't mean I won't do what you want me to do, but I'll continue to remind the board that that is the case. So, the plan we're putting forward does not remove the possibility down the line that the other programming is too costly, doesn't fit, isn't needed, but we need to, we want to investigate that. And then if it doesn't fit, can't afford it, don't need it, and the building space is still available, you still stand in front of you with the same opportunities. We still have this building, the community loves it, you know, where do we all want to go with it next? Do we put programming in there or not? But I think, I do think, I do think we have to be thoughtful about that allocation of resource. I understand the value, I understand what people would love to see, I understand that there's a community segment, many of them sitting behind me, who would love to see it go back the way it was. And if that's where we go, I'm in and I'll do it full bore at the best, best it can be. But that's the trade-off.
And I, I'm just not sure that this proposal and the third rail I'm suggesting is the same thing.
Because?
Because, what I'm suggesting is, looking at the two current magnet schools, both of which have been diluted, I suppose, and saying to those, and bringing back the proposal. Proposal one, consolidation, Hanby, determine what it will be, et cetera. Another proposal, see if we could try to have multiple schools of choice. The four.
Including Longfellow and Central back.
We're talking about the four, right? That's what you were talking about? Going back to what we had is what you said.
Actually, going back to what we had, which brings us to the discussion of Central College, which we didn't discuss this evening and the difficulties with that building. But I think, you know, what I would suggest that we do at this point, because I am concerned that we are digging ourselves into...
Hole.
Well, yeah, hole. We're digging ourselves down and we're not able to see the edge of what we're looking at right now. I want us to come back to this discussion and I also want the board members, within the next couple of, you know, two or three days, I want the board members to identify specifically if there are specific other options that you want the administration to look at, so that everybody is very clear in their thinking, has time to weigh what's been said, has been, you know, had some time to consider what's going on, then send John an email, give John a call. It would be helpful if you would let all of the board members know what it is you're asking. But also suggests, we are not going to inundate you with a list of 15 different proposals to prepare. We are going to limit what we want to have looked at based on the desires and understandings that we have. Does that sound reasonable? Because right now, I'm not sensing any forward motion in our discussion and we need to come back to discussion and move forward.
I would just say that I'm concerned that if we come up with a lot of suggestions, we don't have the facts of, you know, if we say to John, we want all four of the magnets back, I'll use the term magnets, but we have no facts of how many seats it's going to take, how much interest there's going to be, and, you know, and how many dollars it's going to take to open, or what we're going to need in terms of another building, just all of the things. And I thought, I thought it made sense the way you presented it, so I'm, I'm not probably going to come up with a new suggestion to put, give them more work to do, because it's really, every new model is going to provide a new timeline and new work and new planning in terms of how are we going to get there? And we don't have that much time, so I'm...
Significantly limited.
Yeah.
And I know, Nancy, I know you want to, but...
Yeah, she wants to, and I agree, we're...
Understand that as nasty as it was, cuts were made to put the budget back in a place where it needed to be.
Right.
Trying to move forward in a positive direction as we have better allocation of dollars than we anticipated at this point. There are still things left out there that have impacted the community and particularly our families that haven't been addressed yet. I'll give you examples of ones that sit in my mind. Pay-to-participate costs and the cost increase to families and the impact it has on student access to those programs, because we essentially diverted that cost from us to families. The limited amount of transportation, which during these winter months has raised its ugly head in terms of kids having to negotiate through these, and the cost would add, to add value to more people to have additional transportation. The loss of secondary programming at middle school and high school when you go through a course description book because of teaching positions we let go and courses we can't offer. So, those are just some of the things that are left on, IB is another one. Very valuable program, we've put $25,000 of fundraising back on a group of parents to keep that program sustainable. So, all these pieces of the puzzle, we churn this around, and this is what churns around in my head, about all the various factors that are affected and any effort to rebuild around a better budget than we anticipated and we want kids to be. And then the second piece that asks, how do we need to reinvent ourselves moving forward around... around straight A and technology to make ourselves the kind of district we all want to do? So, I have tremendous, I understand, man, tremendous value, tremendous commitment, loyalty people had to those schools, that's what I want to see, but I do have those other things in my head. Those do operate there for me as superintendent as well when I look at that budget, so that's-
What I heard, as regards the options that people were talking about tonight, is this one that you have presented, the return to magnets that we had, and the partial return to magnets that we had.
I can easily put together a one, two, three, four, four magnet school model, and, and what that means, if you want budget projections around that and all those other pieces, you know, I can, I, it's hard to be exact, but we can meander something around if that's what you really want to look at.
It wouldn't have the same level of depth and scrubbing that you've been talking about this evening, and I think we would have to understand that from the get-go, but it would bring it back for additional discussion.
And, and I like that idea. I'm also sitting here thinking about the middle school level, and having just lived it, I, I do agree, we need to address some things there. So I, I, I'm torn. I would like to see one of the buildings used, something for middle school.
And that's, when we mentioned gifted, I wasn't intending to be a gifted school, concept of gifted center, kids spend part of their day, in particular, that might be middle grades.
Yeah, because third graders and eighth graders.
Or it could be gifted classes, couldn't it? Just offer-
But then, but then we're shuttling kids, too.
I don't want to get into specifics about what it would, it wouldn't be, because that'll be digging the hole deeper, but I understand what you're saying, yes. Other kinds of programming that would be available.
I would, I would like to see the buildings used, I know.
Oh, yeah.
I just would. It's, it's a dream of mine, I would like to see the buildings used.
And I think, I think John shares that dream, that we want to see those buildings used, we want kids in those buildings.
But there is a financial cost to that, remember?
But there's also an emphasis on kids and their education. Yes, we will always go back to the finances, and I recognize that that's a critical piece of this, but we've got to stop beating on the finances in, as if it's the only thing. It's the delivery of education, it's the quality and the passion that the teachers have. Let's pay a little bit of attention to that as well. If teachers are in a facility, excuse me, if teachers are in a facility and they're passionate about something, they are going to be better teachers, the kids are going to learn more. Yes, dollars are limited, Carol, I know that, but I don't want to beat just the dollar sign. I also want to look at what the kids are learning, how they're learning, and I want to talk to the passion of the teachers. And I know you do, too. I know that.
And Rick, after your sermon here, yes.
You haven't heard a sermon from me yet.
I agree, absolutely, you know I agree, that's my background. I am, it's not, we're all about kids, that's what we're all about, obviously, and then kids, as a result, we're about the teachers and the good teachers and what we, what we do with that. But we also, and that's my liaison position, have to be concerned about the taxpayer. And so, we take this all in as one big picture. It's not just one or two things, it's a full picture. The use of our facilities is a part of it, of course, and they're sitting there empty, at least two of them are. And so, and, but I'm sure John has that in mind, he knows that. So, these are things that are continually a part of the picture, so maybe we come back and discuss this again, and very quickly, yes.
We'll be, we'll be obviously coming back to this, and now you know why, this is called a work session. We are wrestling with some fairly big topics, and what we are wrestling with was how, is how those topics play out across the continuum of all of our children. And that is never easy, especially with, with finite resources. The good news is, what I hope you've seen tonight is significant progress in taking steps forward, whether it's the technology plan, whether it's the figuring out of how we put children in all of our buildings, our usable buildings, how we bring life to all of the curricular delivery that we have, and how we meet the needs of students at all levels and all ability levels as well. It's good stuff to be wrestling with. It's much better stuff to be wrestling with than what do we have to cut tomorrow. We're in a good place because we're having these discussions. With that, we have another set of public comment. The second portion of public comment on the agenda, just as would have been if we'd had anybody signed up for the first portion, limits our speakers to five minutes each, five minutes' worth of comments per, and you may speak for five minutes, and then you will be notified when your five minutes is up, should you use all of that time. We do ask you to be respectful of others and not to target specific criticisms of specifically-named individuals and so forth out of courtesy to them. With that, we do have people signed up to speak, we have four. The first person signed up to speak is Nancy McFarland.
Good evening, my name's Nancy McFarland. Good evening, Dr. Kellogg and the board. I just came tonight because I was very interested in seeing what the new plan was that was going to come out, and I just want to urge you to, after listening to all the discussions tonight about the schools and the magnet schools and where they go from here, a little bit of my background is, I did have a student, my older son now is in eighth grade at Wellness Springs, and he attended Emerson, and my younger son is in private school currently because of the magnet school debacle. So, what I would like to ask you is to really consider what you've lost, and the parents that you've lost because of that problem and because of the cut, and to consider bringing back and keeping what we have, maybe not always, like you said, being able to bring it all back, but considering saving what we do have and saving some of the schools and using the schools like Emerson and Longfellow again as magnet schools or schools of choice. I guess I shouldn't have used the term magnet, because maybe it'd be considered schools of choice. As I look at other districts, the Phoenix program at Worthington and the middle school, the alternative Worthington High School that's been there for years, the districts around us have, are doing things to separate themselves from us, or from what, you know, they separate themselves from the other suburbs when competing for people to move in. I just feel like in the last year and a half, we have just killed our school district. I have an eighth grader that has really had a very minimal middle school experience when it comes to academics. Four classes, band, he has a great band teacher that teaches band every day instead of giving them a study hall. She lets them come and have band every day. I have a phenomenal algebra teacher that allows students that are having trouble to come in an extra period a day and take algebra twice a day. Like, our teachers are doing their best to accommodate from the cuts. However, now's the time that we can start bringing some of this stuff back. Let's think about it thoughtfully and think about how is the, can we use, I understand there's dollars, I, I understand that, but at the same time, I'm, I have a son that has lived through these cuts, and he had such a wonderful experience at Emerson. I really completely believe that that experience at a small, you know, a small elementary school gave him the great start to go into a 900 school, person's school, and be a leader, and not be afraid to show that he was intelligent, and not be afraid to show that he wanted to work hard when other kids did not have that same drive. So I think that that small cohesive buildings that we're talking about, I understand cost, that is an invaluable resource in this district, that's an invaluable education that we gave our children in this, that we gave for choice. And I think that the bottom line is that we, these teachers have been kind of strung along for the last three years about what's going to happen to my building, what's going to happen to my position, where am I going to go? Emerson has, all teachers at one time were all trained in IB. They, that could have been come an incredibly great IB elementary school. They're all trained. Now we have some that are here, some are there, but that school could come back together, and, and I want you to think about considering it to be an IB elementary school. We're talking about maybe having an IB middle school. Then you'd have an IB, then you would have this, this group of people that have come through that would want to keep the IB program sustainable at the high school, because they've got an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school program. How do we grow these programs from here with the support of the community? How was the community asked anything about the plan that Dr. Kellogg created? Are we going to have any input into what these schools, like our neighborhood schools are going to become? Do the teachers have input? Are we going to do a teacher lottery? What if the teacher doesn't want to teach at the school that is, that's doing STEM? Or STEAM? Or creative arts? I mean, I hope those schools are doing that, but I hope that you have community buy-in, and I hope that you have, that you're getting teacher buy-in as well. Because I think that that's what makes the school cohesive, and that's what makes the school work when you have a themed school, and that we need to have all those buy-ins before we just say, "Okay, you're going to, you're going to create this, we're going to create that, we're going to create this school, we're going to create that school." But you need the buy-ins from the, the parents, the community, and the kids, the kids that are going to school there. And I really hope that you look at all of those when you start factoring in, and we talked about all-day kindergarten, I would really like to see the seatop given to every element, every kindergartner that comes into school and see whether they can, and that would tell you right away if they're going to have reading problems. To me, that's more valuable than opening an all-day kindergarten, because then you could immediately start resources with those kids, and that could change the face of special education by third grade, if you look at that. So, I really hope that as you go through and you try to make these decisions, that you really do it thoughtfully and, and get the community input. Thank you.
Perfect timing, ended right at five minutes. Thank you very much, Nancy. The next speaker signed up is John Walden.
Members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Griffith, first thank you for your time and service to the community. Thanks also to Dr. Kellogg and your staff for the, the effort put forth for tonight's presentation, representing a public body. I know that many hours go into the preparation for just a few minutes of talk, and, and so I appreciate and thank the staff for their efforts tonight. I felt compelled to speak tonight, wasn't going to, thought about it, but perhaps I've been involved in the school of choice issues for too many years in a row. 2010, and maybe some of it's partially to blame on me for that, starting some of the, or being part of the group that started the lottery versus the sibling, but I felt it was important. Secondly was 2012, where it was the post-levy elementary programming and trying to figure out what we could save or what was going to be saved. 2013 was the redistricting, and now it's kind of, throughout that process, we questioned why it was happening, why it was necessary, and tonight, it doesn't seem to have been that much so. Now, for 2014, it's what is next? My mantra for the district, my goal for the district, is hopefully, the district becomes the model. The district becomes the model for Central Ohio, the district becomes the model for the state of Ohio and anywhere else that looks for public education. There's a lot of challenges against public education, and I live here because I believe in what this district is and what it can still be. But as a parent, it's tough to hear the word "intent" and really know what that means, because we asked many times, what was the intent? And that's not the message that was delivered to us by those in charge, and we spent many hours, whether looking through emails, coming to meetings, giving speeches, to know what was the intent from a parent perspective of what the next year was going to bring. Unfortunately, the message does change, and it appears somewhat often. I understand that it changes because of economics, because those are tough challenges for public schools to know the education from one year to the next, to rely on levies to fund it. But we fought really hard to try to talk about economics, and there was a battle, a wall put up at times to talk about what the real data was, the real dollars. So it's tough to know as a parent what the real story is at times, and if the, the message was, the intent was to continue through the life of the program, then the district didn't do as good at meeting its goals on the communication. And so I urge you to make sure it is clear, so we know moving forward, and I ask you, for next year, if the process that we heard tonight goes forward, what does next year really include? Because what we heard was, it continues, but we're not going to define the program to 2014 or 2015, so it doesn't real, till the, till the, after a year of study, or maybe I misunderstood. And then I guess another question is really, who in the community, when it was talking about community, who in the community defines what it is? So should, do we look hard? How do we spread it across? There are great teachers, great students, great families, all across the 49 square miles or so of the district. There are great voices of diversity and great voices that can add a lot to the community and the decision-making process, and I just hope you open it up to hear from them, and we'll hear a lot of different viewpoints. Some of us just want a clear message, and we do want to focus on the next level, too, and continuing to be great, because again, my mantra is, being the model. Thank you for your time, thank you for your service. Good night.
Thank you, John. Next speaker is Louise Reese.
And I'd like to thank you for the beginning part of the evening when you talked about what your goals were as a board and how you were going to progress with business, and it was refreshing to hear. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Kellogg, because I, you know, for years, I've, I've heard this saying, "The truth, truth is the light of the world." And from that, so many great things can come once you get past the shock of the truth, or, or, you know, the issues that are confined around hearing it and whether you want to hear it or not. And, you know, I spent over a year just trying to get people to talk about the 600 students that my math showed us that we were down, and now I see that it's, it's over 700. I'd like to ask a question. Where, where's the evidence or the data? Is there data that shows that large schools that house 900 students or 600 students do equally as well in educating children as smaller schools, say, of the 300? Because what, what we're talking about is resources, and I, I discovered that we could probably close one elementary school over a year ago, just looking at the facts. And so, I guess what I'm asking is, can, can we enlarge the box that we often get stuck in, to not just look at programming for the elementary level? And, and of course, I'm in favor of looking at what we've cut on the middle school and the high school level, because I have a 23-year-old son that basically went through each of these cuts, and now I have an eighth grader that I'm seeing shortages, or things that I know the talent exists to provide, but isn't there right now. And I'm a little concerned when I watch this program, he's in eighth grade now, are we going to be done? Somebody said, "Well, they'll be dead, and I'll be on social security before it's all implemented." And, you know, I guess I would like to know upfront, somehow, if it can be communicated to everybody in the community as to what this plan is and what it entails, so that we as individuals can make our own choices with our children as to what we might need to either enhance their education or to look elsewhere. And, you know, I think that's a fair request, considering everything, but I, I think that I would like to know, do we need to keep one larger school, or, or can we do with two of the smaller schools? And would they be more conducive to a better education for our kids? And again, I would like to say, I'm not so much, my, my eldest was pulled for the gifted day, and bussed there when he was the only kid on a bus, and, and I, I see the costs and the problems, because I've lived through that once already, okay? And I would rather see quality programming in each of the schools, rather than focusing just on one gifted building. Because there's, there's kids that fall right behind or below, whatever that mark is, that's determining what is gifted and what is not gifted, and those kids need a challenge as well, okay? They may not be the 130 IQ or, or whatever, but you know, they're, they need something more than what they're getting right now, too. So, instead of just looking at specialized programs, I'd like to see an evaluation done of how we can improve classes at all levels, including the junior high and senior high level, to see, we have talent, and, and what frustrates me, I think, the most is, when I don't see that talent given the chance to be as great as it is or it could be, and I, I do get frustrated often, looking at this, because I'm going through it and I'm asking questions, and there's not always an answer there that would explain the situation. But, you know, we've seen a lot of cuts, we've seen program cuts. I'm, I'm big on technology, but I would like to see some tech people hired that already have the skills, so that we could get classes going on, at least on the high school level, if not the junior high level as well. And I get concerned as to how long is it going to take to bring people who have no technology skills up to an intermediate level? And, you know, I see, talking about resources, I see a lot of resources that it would probably eat up to try to achieve that, and how's that meeting the most needs or of the most students? And so, I would like to, when you do deal with this, I would like to ask you to please just open up the box a little bit bigger and maybe consider ideas that just haven't been around yet, but some great minds put to work could suggest. I think we get locked in with the same ideas of what has been, instead of looking at what could be- I think we get locked in with the same ideas of what has been instead of looking at what could be. So I'm excited though about this new board. And I'm excited about the new superintendent and the, and the progress that we can make. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Our fourth speaker tonight is Jen Hubbell.
Good evening. And I'd just, first of all, like to say welcome to President Nestor Baker, Mr. Velardo, Mrs. Davidson. You guys are a good-looking board. So, welcome. I, and Dr. Kellogg, it's, I, I'm someone who's come and speak a lot, but I haven't been here this year because I'm trying to get back into the workforce in education, which is a challenge these days. But anyway, I just wanted to, to, three things that I heard tonight. I had no intention to speak at all, but one being I heard, and I've witnessed this in the middle schools, the wonderful media specials we have and the wonderful things they do with technology. And, and it made me sad because I thought about our elementary media specialists who are tracking all over the place. And I thought about my seventh grade son, who had a wonderful relationship with his elementary school media specialist. And then I thought about my third grade daughter. And sometimes we have to remind our elementary kids who our media specialist is, and that makes me sad. And so I think we, as we talk about allocating funds, that we need to think about some of those things that went away and how they're really impacting our kids. And kids love their media specialists usually. And I hate to, when I sub and I say, you know, Mrs. Meta, and they say, who's that? And so think about that. The second thing is that technology, the roadmap is great. It's great to see that. It's exciting. It's innovative. It's excellent. But I don't want to lose sight of today. And so I'm wondering if there's some way to have some sort of expectation. This is very simple. I haven't thought this out, but just when we look at next school year, okay, we can say to parents, all of our second graders are going to accomplish this with the technology that we currently have. And all of our third graders are going to accomplish this with the technology that we currently have. And we're going to see a product. We're going to see something that they did. Instead of parents saying, I wish my kid had that teacher because they really use technology. So no longer is it a competition about who, who your child has, but, but that they're all experiencing, and we're not waiting for the new technology, but we're using what we already have. And what expectation can we have for today with what we already have? And the third thing is, and this has always been, I don't know, stickler for me even maybe when I was teaching, is that, and I taught in a district where the gifted programs were in the buildings. And it's always kind of bothered me that Westerville has never seemed to look at that model. And, and which is piggybacks on, I think Louise who spoke before me. And that, when we put together, I love the idea that we're going to have a, a committee that gets together to talk about looking at the gifted program. But let's not forget that the gifted program doesn't have to be a pull-out and it doesn't have to be somewhere else. And we don't have to say that's where the gifted kids go. Because I think that our children learn very valuable skills in their, in their schools that don't necessarily have to do with their giftedness, that help them to be good citizens. Empathy and teamwork and leadership. And I think when we take them out of those real-life environments, we don't always support their giftedness in a balanced way. So I, I hope that we look at the gifted program not only as an off-site pull-out program, but let's talk about how we do that within our own, our, each, each of our individual school buildings. So you guys have a lot of work ahead of you. And, you know, and I, and I have a quick minute, and this came up as someone else was speaking. I had a unique situation in that my, I had a child who was a magnet child for one year while I was the PTA president at another school, elementary school. And she had a wonderful experience and she talks about her first grade teacher all the time. And then there was confusion about what was going to happen with the magnet program. And so I made the personal decision to take her back to her home school, which was, which is one of our largest elementary schools, and she's thriving. And so I think that every building, no matter what its size, as long as it has support from its parents, and I think that's what we get in our small buildings, is that we have, we have a lot of parental support. And I think that can happen, no matter what the size of the building. And it's a difficult choice. We have a lot of hard choices, but thank you.
Thank you, Jen. That concludes the list of our speakers for this evening. I thank you very much for all of your comments. Appreciate them very much. Moving on to, well, before we move on, John, I want you to reiterate, if you would. Let me see, John Walden asked, wanted that clarification again regarding the status of those children who are in our current magnet classes. No matter what happens with this discussion, the status remains the same.
And I intended to do that, so, two pieces to it. One is the intent to allow the current kids in those current programs to complete that through fifth grade, so those third graders through. And that the construct of the program remains what it is today. So if they're in a classroom that's intended to be world cultures, if they're in a classroom that's intended to be the fine arts or the math and science, that that, that curricular focus is retained through that fifth grade year. That if a game plan is put forward to consider what handby might look like under the model we suggested, those students, consideration should be given to those students and them given the space to complete the programs that we provided for them and that they committed to do. So it's not intended to pull the rug out from underneath them while they're there. It's intended to keep that moving forward regardless of what we do on the back end. And on the gifted one, because that came up, I want to be clear. The intent is to, to turn over the discussion about gifted programming to a team to consider services as exist, three through eight. If building space would support improved programming, then we have space available. If building space isn't because of those who understand the research and know the piece of gifted belief that that's not a part of what we need, then we haven't used the space. So it's not intended to say it has to be. Those are, it's more of investigative, investigating what we might want to put in place. The research on gifted is clear about pull-out. The research on gifted is clear about keeping kids with other kids. There's a balance between the two. So just want to be clear, it wasn't intended to say, I don't want people walking out the door or the community here that what Dr. Kellogg recommended was that Emerson become a gifted school. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying a group will look at gifted education and if they feel the need for additional classroom space or Emerson might fit into that plan, then it's available, but not if they don't think it's, that's the case.
Thank you for the clarification. I think that was an important clarification to make. We have future meetings scheduled right now for February the 24th at 6 o'clock. That's our regular meeting and that will be here. March 10th at 6 o'clock, a regular session, also here. And then April 14th at 6 o'clock, regular session already scheduled for this room as well. Do keep in mind, keep an eye out, keep an ear out because we were talking about scheduling another work session at some point in time before too much time elapses. With that, does anyone have anything they would like to say before we adjourn? You want to talk?
I'm going to speak first for Cindy.
Okay.
With my microphone.
Okay.
Last month, Deb Ubre, first grade teacher at Faust Elementary, was teacher of the month from Sunday 95. And Cindy would like me to say congratulations to her. She is a fantastic teacher.
Yes.
I would like to say good luck to David Baker. You're going to do amazing things, I know. Thank you, you know, administration for all your hard work in this 21st century learning thing. I'm very excited about it. Nancy, Louise, Jen, John, you've given us a lot to think about and I appreciate it. I appreciate your thoughts very much. So, that's it.
Anything from this end of the table? Okay. I'm glad you brought up Deb. This really shows you my particular age, but I remember Deb when she was a first-year teacher. She was my son's first-year teacher and she was fantastic then. She was such a blessing to my family. With that, we're done.